PM. It is 7:00 PM on Monday, June 21st, 2021, and I will call this meeting of the Lansing City Council to order and ask that clerk's vote, please call the roll.
Okay, Council. That's. Councilmember Dunbar.
Yeah.
From. Councilmember Dunbar, where are you remote from?
All right, participating remotely from South Lansing.
Thank you, Councilmember Garza.
President participating remotely from South Lansing, Michigan.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein.
President participating remotely from South Lansing, Michigan.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Thank you, Councilmember Spatafor.
President participating remotely from the western side of the northern part of South Lansing.
That's very oddly specific, but. First, that's like.
Somebody had a good dinner last night. Today, rather, President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Thank you, and Councilmember Wood.
President participating remotely from the west side of Lansing.
Okay, thank you, there are seven members present, a quorum council member. Bets is absent. And it takes us, I believe he did let us know that he would not be here, so that takes us to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Is there any, Councilmember Spitsely?
Thank you, Council President. Um, I want us to just continue to pray for our city. Pray for the, you know, the violence, oh goodness, pray for the violence that's happening in our city. I'm having computer problems here and I'm trying to be serious. And, and I also want to pray for the victims of the storm down I-65 in Alabama. You know, I drive down there and I drive my parents down there for Florida, when I go to Florida, and just a horrific thing, and these, all these kids were already, you know, challenged and came from abused homes and, and so it was 10 children and an adult, he happened to be a volunteer firefighter, and I'd like to just pray for them. What a tragic horrible thing, but also just pray for our city, we've got to do something, we're in crisis, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitsely, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President, and just to echo off of what Councilwoman Spitsely said, the victims and their families of Marshawn Beard, a teenager, Damon Johnson Jr., a teenager, and Jamaris Leek Jr., a teenager, were all killed recently by guns here in Lansing. Super tragic, and I don't even know what we can do and what we are going to do, but I think it's consensus hearing from the people that are working on the issues now is that we all have to work together, so that's a top priority, and I hope that we continue to work on it and start to work on it more in our Equity Diversity and Inclusion Committee.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson, so we do have those, the individuals mentioned and groups of people mentioned to keep in our thoughts as we reflect in a moment of meditation. Please join me in that. Thank you all, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all, thank you.
And you have for your approval the print council proceedings of June 7th, we managed to somehow skip May 17th, so we will get those next meeting, but we do tonight at June 7th.
All right, Mr. Vice President.
Sure, I would move the proceedings as per.
There is proper motion before us, are there any discussion on the proceedings? Noting that the May 17th ones will eventually make it into your hands. Just ask, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitsely.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Seven yeas, zero nays, the motion is adopted, and that takes us to special ceremonies. We have a legislative update from State Representative Sarah Anthony.
Thank you, and Sarah, Representative Anthony is on her way into the room, there she is. Welcome, Representative Anthony, we are, this is the first time that I've been president that we've had our state rep in, but I know this is something that many of our state reps have done regularly, and Representative Anthony is going to continue that tradition, providing us with some updates, and I know she's got a lot of good information to share with us, so welcome back to virtual city hall. Thanks for joining us today.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you to all the council members, to our clerk, to our mayor, thank you for allowing me the opportunity just to give a very brief update. I won't tell you about all the things that are happening at the Capitol, you all have me hopefully on speed dial, so when it comes time to talk about budget and funding and all the things that we're doing in the Capitol, please feel free to always reach out to me. But today I want to give a brief update on something that I'm pretty sure every single one of you have been hearing about, which is fireworks, you've either been hearing about it from your constituents, or you've been hearing it outside of your window. And I wanted to make sure that you knew exactly what I have been doing over at the Capitol to be responsive to those concerns. I've heard directly from folks like Councilwoman Wood, Councilman Hussein, you all have been very vocal, because I know you all have a very direct connection to a lot of folks in and around our community, so Councilman, or I'm sorry, President Spatafor, do you mind if I share my screen?
No, let me just double check that you can, and you can, yes.
All right, let me see if I can pull this up, don't let the age fool you, I am not Texas. All right. Alrighty, so I won't be too long with a very formal presentation, but I want to make sure to give you all the latest and greatest. So, I want to share a couple of quotes, and these are quotes that have either been forwarded from you all as council members, or we've heard directly from our office. This is a quote from one of our constituents, "The city of Lansing is horrible regarding fireworks, I do not want to live here anymore." Another person has basically said, you know, "Look, my husband is a veteran who at times has become suicidal due to fireworks being shot off during times that have not been designated as legal times." Another person. Moment. "I love fireworks, I don't even mind them in my neighborhood within reason, but what happened this year was totally unreasonable and has put people in their homes at risk of damage and injury." Another person, "I am a 100% disabled veteran with 70% attributed to PTSD. I hate all the noise, and my pets aren't happy about all the noise either. Then finally, I can't enjoy my backyard due to constant fireworks. No one seems to know what the ordinance is, no one seems to be following it, and no one seems to be enforcing it." So this is the problem, and I know this is familiar to you all. You know, the problem is that these fireworks are causing sleep disruption, PTSD for veterans and crime victims, other folks with, with mental illnesses, the risk of home damage, pet anxiety, it's hard to enforce the existing regulations. And we have to give a little bit of context here. The Michigan Fireworks Safety Act of 2011 was passed by former Governor Rick Snyder, and it loosened regulations on private citizens' use of fireworks. Now, although the city council, and we thank you all, has an ordinance, right, we have an ordinance here that allows fireworks within certain times. Illegal usage is rampant throughout our city, we know this. Residents argue local authorities are granted little power to enforce the current law, as residents are required to provide law enforcement with an exact address, we've heard this time and time again, they need to see the incident, they need to have evidence, and ultimately, it's just very difficult to enforce. And so what are we doing, what are the purpose of these bills? So, since I began my term in 2019, I have introduced and now reintroduced legislation to repeal this act in 2011, which would prohibit amateur sale, purchase, and use of fireworks without a permit. It would also establish safer guidelines for use and ultimately improve public service. So, there are a couple of people that I know individuals in our community are looking for what to do, and I have had a huge outcry for stories, for narratives, I've been collecting the voices of Lansing residents, and we've also had folks across the state reach out about this concern. But there's a couple of people that people in the city of Lansing can contact to lift up their concerns and ask for a hearing for the, the bill package that I spearheaded, along with our neighbor to the south, Representative Kara Hope. You can always feel free to contact me, and my contact information is there, as your state representative. You can also contact your state senator, Senator Curtis Hertel, who is again, our partner in the legislature, and we hope that both residents will be contacting both their state representative as well as their state senator. But ultimately, in order for these bills to be signed into law, they need to work through the legislative process. And so we're also encouraging folks to reach out to Representative Roger Hauck, who is the Chair of the House Committee on Regulatory Reform. He has the key to determine if this bill sees the light of day, if our concerns in Lansing are ultimately taken seriously, and if this bill gets a hearing and then ultimately starts throughout the legislative process. Now, I won't go into the big, you know, how a bill becomes a law, because you know, that's for our educators who are on the city council, you can talk about the schoolhouse rocks, but it is a lengthy process, it has to go through the House, it has to go through the Senate, and then back to the House in order for it to land on the governor's desk, who I might add is also a Lansing resident. So I'm sure she's hearing these fireworks as well. And so, if the key takeaways from this presentation can be a few things, is one, we've heard you, we've heard Lansing residents, keep reaching out to myself at the state level, because I will tell you, city council, you're doing everything that you can. The city is doing what you all can to enforce and try to regulate many of these very loud, very damaging fireworks, and, and a part of the problem that I did not articulate, but we've seen every year a headline in the Lansing State Journal, and when someone gets hurt. I believe one of the most heartbreaking stories was a young, young boy last year who was permanently maimed by a firework, right, so we have to get these large fireworks under control. So continue to lift up your voices, continue to lift up the stories, know that I am fighting for a hearing. I'm not sitting idle, at the state level, I'm trying to work through the process, working on both sides of the aisle to get a hearing, it, the fireworks lobby is a powerful lobby, right? It's one that is well-connected, well-resourced, but I do always believe that the power of citizens and our voices are the most powerful tool we have in our toolbox. So with that, I could definitely answer any questions from folks, but ultimately, I want to say thank you all to the city council for your partnership, I'm always accessible and available, but as we creep into the July 4th weekend, I thought this in particular was a very timely conversation, and again, always, always willing to answer questions.
Thank you, Representative, I appreciate that very much. Is there any, are there any questions for Representative Anthony? Councilmember, Vice President Hussein.
Yes, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you being here, I mean, I think first, a couple of affirmations. I remember when Joan used to come down, when she was rep for the 68th District, and the accessibility, the transparency, I think the creation of some understanding in terms of what the state does, and, and what really is within your jurisdiction to do, I think that was most impressed upon me as I watched, I was not at council at that time, but I did watch the meetings, I did engage in the meetings, and so I appreciate that you're kind of resurrecting that aspect, I think as city council members, because we are accessible, and because maybe we're the most visible electeds, people come to us for just about everything, and unfortunately, it's difficult to explain a lot of times, Sarah, that not only can we, you know, not, we often are prohibited by founding documents, by laws, from really intervening, we can, we can certainly advocate, which a number of us do, and we do it almost pugnaciously, but, I mean, when the rubber really hits the road, we can't get anything done without this type of accessibility, without this type of partnership, and without this type of transparency. I think of a, a meeting I had last week, myself and Durell Slaughter met with the new Lansing School District Superintendent, Mr. Benjamin Sheldon, or I believe I'm saying that correctly. And we talked a lot about some of the things that are, are kind of onboarded by me from Concerned Citizens, we talked about inequitability and programming, in fact, that in some of our most economically challenged neighborhoods, we're building auditoriums and, and you know, really kind of interfacing, you know, the performing arts and things of that nature with these kids, but in some of our most connected and affluent neighborhoods, we're building science labs, we're immersing them in the Chinese language, we're immersing them in ID, in the health and the sciences, we're partnering with Sparrow and onboarding these kids into, into internships and things like that, so we talked a lot about that, we talked about disproportionality when we talk about shuttering of schools, and the fact that the school district, whether it was intentional or not, has really left shuttered schools and rotting playgrounds and tracks and things of that nature in their wake, because they've shuttered, shuttered schools disproportionately in some of our most disadvantaged communities, and let me tell you, that superintendent, he gets it. I think he wants to reverse that long trend that we've had in the Lansing School District, and I get the same type of care and consideration when I talk to you, so I really appreciate that fireworks piece, because that is something we have heard long, clear, that, that something needs to be done, I remember working with Councilwoman Wood, when we tried to put forth the most prohibitive ordinance we possibly could, and that was, you know, obviously baking in the 12 state protected days, but the reality is, without the control over the sale piece, there's nothing we can do locally to enforce it, it was a nightmare to enforce, so I really appreciate your work there. I do have a couple, couple of questions for you, though. The first pertains to, and you and I, we have a lot of conversations, because you're not just accessible, in this way you and I talk offline quite a bit. When it comes to predatory payday lenders in the state statute, I mean, it truly does allow them to disproportionately position themselves in economically disadvantaged communities, communities of color, I think particularly in those places where there really are deserts, we think of financial institutions such as federal credit unions. And so, you know, you think of the interest rates, you think of the fines, I mean, they're criminal, frankly, and they, you know, they are allowed, at least in my understanding, per state statute. And so the, the result for so many of the folks that we represent here in the city of Lansing really is financial ruin, unfortunately, right, in, in our most challenged communities. It creates barriers to ascension, and we don't talk about it enough, I don't believe, so I think it's, you know, imperative that at the local state and really the federal level, that we, you know, we do more to incentivize, you know, institutions setting up and challenged neighborhoods and things of that nature, but again, so much of this is caused by, I think, our state statute. I remember you and the mayor wrote an op-ed back in 2019, because there was a package of bills moving through the process to allow for, I believe, if I'm mistaken, please correct me, but I believe even higher interest rates. And so I'm wondering what happened with that, where are we now, and how do we get a handle on this issue, Sarah?
Yeah, the, it's the best of times and the worst of times, right, so those were not successful, but they are always trying to tweak and strengthen the payday lending, right? So we have to be really diligent, I mean, you remember some of the fights that we were having here locally, I remember working as a county commissioner with the power of "we", to have the questions such as, why are they, there's a concentration of these payday lending places on the south side, and some of our pockets in our community, but you don't see that in some of the suburbs, right? And so I will say that, just like I talked about the fireworks lobby, they are also a very powerful lobby, right? I would always challenge Lansing residents to do a couple of things. One is to check out the votes of how people are voting on this legislation. This feels like one of those times that we have to be thinking about equity, and making sure that we're using our lens and using our platforms to actually say, particularly here in Lansing, we have the Financial Empowerment Center, we have tools to help people get banked, to help people, you know, have a pathway out of poverty, we don't need these types of predatory institutions that just create a cycle for folks, right, so I would stay tuned to the legislation that's passing, that is moving through the process, and I'll continue to lift up my voice, you know, I think the last time this went through last term, I sent immediately an email to the city council to say, you know, be diligent, I'm lifting up my voice, I might need a letter, if there's a hearing, you know, I might need you to come down, and so I'll continue to do that. But, and I won't be partisan in this, in this setting, but, you know, as a Democrat, I'm not setting the agenda, right, I'm often reacting to the agenda and trying to work across the aisle to get pro-people common sense legislation done, but oftentimes, if that is a priority for the majority party, it's harder for me to fight the good fight in, in the Capitol, so so I'll keep you posted on any new developments around payday lending.
Okay, I appreciate that, and if I could, just one more, very quickly, and I'm sure you know, because of the conversations we've had, what's coming. I want to talk real quickly about the Liquor Control Act. And, and I know if I was in the state legislature, I'd probably be banging my head up against the wall every single second of every single day, and I wouldn't care if I failed, but I would continue to reintroduce, reintroduce, reintroduce. I guess I'm curious, what is it about the act that allows for this proliferation of liquor stores? I think, you know, particularly the off-site consumption variety? And, and I mean, again, they're setting up in our most challenged neighborhoods, just like the predatory lending piece. You know, I have some intersections here in the city of Lansing, and particularly in the southwest side, and I know you know what intersection I'm talking about, or at least what intersections I'm talking about, that has some four and five liquor licenses, and they are always in the poorest sections of my ward and really of the city. And it's, you know, and it's obvious as to why, right, they feed off of dependency, they prey upon the vulnerabilities of our people, and dare I say, they actively, actively recruit really our youngest citizens. They have the, the low nutrient, high sugar snacks, they cash checks for our youngest citizens, some of our entry-level workers, and then, and again, dare I say, you know, they, they sell illicitly to, to many of these minors. And I think really, to, to that end, what is it about the Liquor Control Act? It's not just the density piece, but what is it that makes it so difficult to shut down these places? You know, I think I know, it's slaps, slaps on the hands, it's the placing of licenses and escrow and transferring of licenses to family members and, and that thing, or that, I should say, that, that nature. But again, what are, what are the flaws that allow for, I think, the density, and really for the bad actors to thrive? Have you done anything to try to get after this, and what has been the results?
So I will say, you know, when we had our first conversation, and I think it was one of the big beats on the south side to talk about this with a couple of community members, you know, I immediately went back to my office and started to, to order up some bluebacks, and, and just for the public, a blueback is literally like a, a bill before, or, you know, a draft bill before it starts to work through the process. Andy, you remember this, right, like, you know, and, and that's how you, how you kind of work through it, and you get the legal team together to try to dream up a couple of concepts. We have some of those bluebacks on our desk, right? Ready to kind of roll, but I will tell you how I've been successful in getting bills through the, you know, to the governor's desk for signature, is a lot of stakeholder engagement on the front end. You know, trying to make sure that before we even put ourselves out there, you know, what are the pitfalls, right? It is a very complicated system and issue, there's a lot that goes on there. I can talk, just so we don't monopolize the entire time, like, we can talk a little bit about it, but just know that I have some bluebacks in my office, ready to kind of nip away at it, but it would be incremental, right, a complete overhaul of the Liquor Control Act would be a massive undertaking. But I do think that there's some common sense things that we can be doing for similarly situated communities, because Lansing is not unique, right, you go to Flint, Saginaw, Detroit, you know, parts of Grand Rapids, we are struggling with some of the same things, and when we're talking about place making and attracting folks, you know, those conversations need to be very symbiotic, right? And so, I can do a deeper dive into like where we have gotten, but we have ordered up some concepts that I'd love to have some reaction from city council folks, including you, for sure.
Okay, I appreciate that, and in terms of, in terms of stakeholder engagement and, and a rallying of the troops, there are folks, I think, at this, this virtual dais, if you will, that the legislate circles around me, you know, we got some political walks, I mean, we got a lot of talent in the room, if you will, but, you know, one of the things I do well is, is engagement, and, and trying to advocate, and trying to rally the troops, and so whatever I can do to help you push some of those critical, I understand just how insurmountable those tasks might seem, but anything worth doing is, right, very, very difficult, and whatever I can do to partner with you to get those things done, I'll do it, thanks.
Thank you, and that's the job, right? It's, it's like, the title is literally representative, and if I'm not representing your interests in the Capitol, not doing the job, so, thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, we have Congress, Congresswoman Spitsely, Councilwoman Spitsely up next.
Well, I've been promoted, and I, I like that, but, you know, our Congresswoman, she's doing a great job, so I don't want to step on her toes, but thank you, Mr. President, I, I just, Representative Anthony, I almost called you Sarah, Representative Anthony, thank you for coming. I'm sorry I missed you at Juneteenth, I saw pictures of folks I like literally said hi to, and then there's a picture of you and them, so I, I'd like to, for you to give us an overview on the police reform bills that you guys announced, and, you know, what are your, what are your thoughts on that? I really really appreciate, you know, the fact that you have that ability to work across the aisle to get things done, because I think that that makes you one of the most effective legislators there, but I also liked what you said about engagement and stakeholders, and making sure you have your finger on the pulse of what's going on in the community, so that you know that you are properly representing their interests, but if you could kind of just give me an update of what's going on with that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, sure, and, and I can send over some follow-up information too, because there are quite a few packages that are working their way through the legislature, there's a senate-led package that is actually bipartisan, and it deals with everything from, you know, having mental health professionals embedded in some of the, the systems, and then there's a house-led package that was particularly led by members of the Detroit Caucus and the Black Caucus that have also tackled a number of issues, you know, there's things related to no-knock warrants, qualified immunity, I mean, it, it, there's every, I think, recommendation that folks were discussing and heard from activists, from community leaders, from, you know, you name it, in 2020, there is a bill in the hopper, right, but we all know, you know, not every bill is going to make it through the finish line. There may not be an appetite from the majority party to tackle some of these issues. I have several bills within the packages, you know, namely, one that prohibits the use of volunteer law enforcement. So we saw our Ingham County Sheriff recently disbanded or phased out his volunteer law enforcement officers, because quite honestly, if someone looks like a law enforcement officer, and you find out that it's really just a volunteer, that is ripe for issues, right, you know, whether you're just doing parade patrol or helping out at an MSU game, if there's an emergency, I want to know that someone who, you know, is deputized has actually been trained by MCOLs, right, they're MCOL certified, so that is my bill in the package, there's another bill around making sure that minors actually have a parent or guardian when they are being interrogated, right? So, I typically try to, yes, have some very ambitious bills around police reform and other things, but also some very practical ones that we can honestly get over the finish line. So I'll send you a comprehensive list of those bills that have been introduced by my, my colleagues, and I think that we will see progress on some, but not all. At a press conference a few weeks ago, I stood alongside the mother of Breonna Taylor, and, you know, you start off with saying, okay, I'm going to do this kind of political speech, and you don't do that when there's a grieving parent. We are interacting with grieving parents here in, in the city of Lansing, and so I think that it's just telling that this is not the time for a lot of political grandstanding, we have to find legislation that actually helps solve these issues, so I'll send over that comprehensive list, and then I'd love to get your thoughts, because I know that the city of Lansing is also doing some, some good things around hiring and, and reform efforts and, and looking at funding, so I'll send over that list for sure, but that's a good question, thank you.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
And finally, Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, it's, it's great to have you, Representative Anthony. One of the things I think is noteworthy is when the state statute on fireworks first passed, there was not a regulation on the days limiting the amount of days that it could be done, and that, that people could shoot off the fireworks. And people all over the state complained, and so you had representatives that were paying attention to that. And even though we've limited that, I do know that we're hearing this not only here in Lansing, but you hear it all over at, as well, and the problems that go with that, so I really appreciate the fact that you're working on this, and if there's anything, I know I can only speak for my, myself, but I know we hear from constituents on a regular basis about difficulty with this and, and what it means, so we appreciate the work that, that you're doing on this. I also want to echo what Councilmember Hussein said on the liquor issue. At, at one time, the Liquor Commission did allow municipalities to limit the number of liquor licenses for to limit the number of liquor licenses for takeout based on some equity issues within a community. And I know with the replacement of some of the members on that board, that's sort of gone by the wayside. And I know at more than one time, this council has sent in letters to liquor control over establishments that have created a great deal of problems in our in our community. And we've only had a couple of those that they stood behind and refused to give liquor licenses. The majority of them were given a suspension or a a limited liquor license for a period of time. And then before you know it, they were granted their regular liquor license. So anything that we can do to continue to work on that, I think, is is great. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And always keep me in the loop. So obviously, the things that I need to be following up on, our office needs to follow up on. You know, we tried be accessible as possible, so please let me know.
The last, the last thing I would say is, I I think I speak for the entire community in talking about the fact that voters' rights and the bills, I I've got a thumbs up by our city clerk, the bills and the things that are trying to make their way through the legislature that actually limit the ability for for voters. And we've worked so hard to make sure people understand that their votes count and that they need to come out and vote and accessibility. And now to just take all these steps backwards, it's it's just unbelievable that we're in this situation right now.
It it I would go so far as to say it's criminal. When voters have tried year after year and have been successful in expanding the rights to vote, right? And Lansing, I mean, received national attention under the leadership of of our clerk, Chris Woke, in making sure that we were as accessible as possible and reached literally everybody, right? And so for those efforts to be undermined, it is it is criminal. And so we're we're fighting the good fight. Some of these are moving through the process, not the whole package, but some of these are moving rather quickly through the packet, through the process. So you know where my vote's going to be, but it's a very fragile situation right now in the Capitol related to these voter suppression bills.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Anthony. That looks like the questions we have from the council. So thank you for joining us tonight. We'll let you get on with your evening, and we always appreciate hearing from you and and the work you do for us to say in Lansing, but across the street.
Thank you for your service, everyone. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that takes us to comments by council members and the city clerk.
Mr. Clerk, I think we're, Carol, did you have something you want to do under special presentation? Or do you want to wait?
Let me make sure he's there. I do not see.
He's he's in the.
A surprise.
Chief Green, if we could bring Chief Green over and if we could do his tribute that we have for him, I would appreciate that at this time.
He's been brought over, I think.
He should be here now.
Yep. Hello, Chief.
That looks like Joe Boo to me. I don't.
For those who may be watching, the tribute is on the agenda. It is agenda item number 10 on the consent agenda, but we're obviously pulling it forward.
Yes, there he is. And thank you. May I go ahead, Mr. President?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I don't like doing this. So let me start off by saying that. And actually, when his retirement was before the Retirement Board, I reluctantly said yes. I know that Mayor Shore said voted yes for his retirement. And then afterwards made some comments about how he didn't want to do it, but he didn't think that he could not do it. So so where we are right now is we are, would like to recognize Chief Green for the work that he has done, not only as the chief of police, but through his tenure here at the the city. Simply because of the fact that I've been on council for so long, many of the officers, when they retire, I can remember the times that they sat in my mother's kitchen or on her front porch and received the training about what it meant to be work in the community and and be part of that. And that's where I met Chief Green for the first time. So we have a resolution that we'd like to present to Chief Green, thanking him for his years of service. And if I could have the clerk read that, then what we'll do from there is ask for a vote on that. Mr. Clerk?
Just give me a second here.
Okay.
You were going to want me to read it, so.
Well, I'm sorry.
About 10 seconds here.
Not a problem. Make the screen bigger so you can see it.
Okay, resolved by the City Council of the City of Lansing. Whereas Darryl D. Green has served as the Lansing, or me, whereas Darryl D. Green has served the Lansing Police Department since 1997 as and was sworn in as police chief in 2019. As Captain, Chief Green was the only person in Lan- in Lansing Police Department history to lead all four major divisions that include patrol, investigations, administration, and staff services. And whereas Darryl D. Green in 1993 graduated from Temple University with a Bachelor of Arts degree in political science, received a Master of Science degree in criminal justice from Michigan State University, and furthered his education in 2013 by receiving his Doctor of Philosophy degree in public administration from Western Michigan University. Darryl D. Green was in the U.S. Navy active duty from 1985 to 1989 and U.S. Navy Reserves since 1990. And whereas while serving the city of Lansing, Darryl D. Green implemented the second phase of the real-time crime center established officer implicit by and human police police use youth interaction trainings throughout the department, expanded de-escalation and crisis intervention training for officers, along with policy reform changes, creating a new youth interaction policy, immigration policy, and de-escalation policies. And whereas through community engagement, Darryl D. Green developed Neighborhood Strong television program to increase transparency and community education on law enforcement and started the Police Transparency Page and increased transparency by posting citizen complaint responses on the city open data portal, conducted multiple community reviews of police use of force, resulting in changes as a result of input from several community work groups, partnered with Suits and the city for LGBTQ training and multiple LGBTQ plus concerns and issues. And whereas Darryl D. Green, in addition to implementing and addressing best practices for the Lansing Police Department, has played key roles on multiple organizations and boards, including advocates and leaders for police and community trusts, Lansing Mayor's Racial Justice and Equity Alliance, Tri-County Crisis Intervention Team, Michigan Human Trafficking Task Force, Michigan Partners in Christness, and a volunteer at Turning Point of Lansing Youth Mentoring. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lansing City Council extends our gratitude and appreciation on the many years of dedication and sincere concern for the citizens in the city of Lansing. The City Council acknowledges Darryl D. Green for his embodied character traits of devotion to duty and brotherly love for his fellow officers. We wish him well in the next chapter of his life.
And with that, Mr. President, I would move the resolution.
That is a proper resolution, a proper motion. And I would say, ask for some discussion real quick, and then we'll vote this out. But we can still, we can, we'll have several time for, several time, still have time for for comment. So Councilmember Spitsely.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I first want to start off by thanking Chief Green for his service to our country and then thanking him for service to our city. You were just, you know, it's it's been a pleasure these past six years on council. And the last couple of years is you've been on as chief to work with you. And so, you know, wherever you're going, I hope that you're hanging around here in the city of Lansing so that we can still wave and say hi. But I wanted to personally thank you for your service. You've had, you've had a couple of rough years, but it's been done, in my mind, professionally. And I was really very happy and very proud to have you as our chief. Thank you, and Godspeed.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitsely. I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll, and then we'll open it up for discussion again. Mr. Clerk?
Okay, on the resolution, Councilmember Statafo.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Spitsely. Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
I believe she left.
Okay, Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Member Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Okay, six J zero Nays, the resolution is adopted.
Thank you very much. Mr. Vice President?
Sorry, I know I got my hand up late. In any event, I wanted to, you know, also thank you, Chief Green, for for your service to this country, to the state of Michigan, to the city of Lansing, to our citizens. You and I, we've had an interesting couple of years, a lot of engagement. We've had the opportunity to go to lineup together, to have coffee together, to chat on the phone, to text back and forth. And candidly, I can say now, we can pull back the curtain. We we agreed probably as much as we disagreed. But what I will say is that I always knew that you cared about the citizens of the city, that you were wanting to do the absolute best job you possibly could, that you you are one of the most responsive, I have to say, one of the most responsive cabinet-level individuals that I've experienced or or engaged with, I should say, in my six years on the city council. And so for that, I greatly, greatly appreciate you. I learned a lot from you. And and I know I said probably more than, what, maybe 30 times, I know I'm a pain in the butt, but but again, I just so much appreciate how responsive you were to the concerns of Southwest Lansing in your time as chief. Thank you.
Yes, and Chief, I hope I got more hands up. All right. Rep. Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be quick. I just want to say thank you for your service, Chief, to this country and to the city of Lansing. I wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors and stay safe, brother.
Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, President Statafo, for just a moment. I do want to take a moment. One of the honors that comes along with being city clerk is that I administer the oath of office to all incoming police officers. And I've been through several chiefs, but I can tell you, none of them has shown the care and understanding and the welcoming and the trying to institute, you know, a broad and accepting culture to the incoming recruits, as I've seen from Chief Green. So I want to say thank you for your service and it's been an honor working with you.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mr. President. I don't usually weigh in, but geez, I don't even have the words. Chief Green, we we talked about him a little bit this morning in Cabinet. He continually says there is no playbook for what happened for the last year and a half. Well, he has written the playbook, hopefully never to be used again for a pandemic. But he is, he is the most talented, incredible individual as a person, as a father, as a husband. I I have just been overwhelmed with his professionalism here. It's a it's a 24/7 job, and and he has, he has killed it. So I want to, I want to recognize Police Chief Darryl Green. I also want you all to know, this man has such integrity. We tried really hard to to throw him a party. We did something for Chief Jankowski, and we tried really hard. But he he stood up and he said, in the last year and a half, we've had many officers that have retired and they didn't get a party. And he wasn't going to have one either, because he stands in solidarity with the others. And again, it just, it just boosts my respect for him. I hope we all will stand up and take him up on his word when he says he will continue to be involved in our community. He's just going next door to East Lansing. You know, it's not quite as good as Lansing, but, you know, we we let him do that. He does, you know, he'll he'll bleed green a bit. But we're really very sad to lose him, but I am very excited for Police Chief Darryl Green, for his retirement, for his future, and for his family. So thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to say a few words. And Godspeed, Chief Green. You'll you'll be missed, but 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 I still am not, I'm still going to keep texting and calling you from time to time. And I think we're going to have to ensure that IT gives him his city cell phone, so we can all stay in touch.
You can do that?
I don't know. I'll ask the attorneys. No, but Dr. Green, Chief, I wanted to just say thank you for your service to the city, lifelong career here. In the three years I've been here, I've just been impressed by the way you've embraced the role and really care about our community. It's obvious that you've you've spent your your life here and and really appreciate what Lansing has to offer. There is only thing, only one thing worse that I can think of, losing you to Michigan State, and that is losing you to the University of Michigan. So at least you, at least you made the right choice there. I did have a chance to meet your new boss and give him a little bit of a hard time this weekend at their Juneteenth celebration about, you know, taking taking a great, great officer and and public servant from the city. But we're glad to see you enjoy your retirement and and do what's next in your in your career. So thank you very much. And if you want to say anything, the floor is yours, and then we'll 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 move on. So no, we can't stop embarrassing you.
I just want to say thank you very much to all of you. You all are just unique with just some unique personalities. And I've learned more from you all than I could ever teach you as well. And you all are devoted to this city, which inspired me as well to be a a person and a public servant in this city. So thank you very much for your efforts. And you're absolutely right. I am part of this community. I have a lot of volunteerism still left in me, and so our paths will cross in the future. So thank you very much, and let's move Lansing forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Well, one more special ceremony, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, yes, I understand we have another tribute that's currently listed on the consent agenda that will be moving forward, and that's the tribute for Ryan Kost's selfless acts of service and commitment to the city of Lansing. Agenda item number 11, if you're trying to follow along at home.
Yeah, and that is, that is me. If we could pull Ryan over.
Yeah, there's two of them.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
I see that.
I'm bringing both in. I hope they're not both unmuted.
Maybe.
I hope for the best.
Him and his husband.
I got, I got my mute ready.
Do we? All right, so we do have him. Okay, great. So so listen, Ryan Kost, I had the absolute pleasure of meeting Ryan last month. It was May 22nd. We were having our Southwest Action, it was kind of our our day of service, if you will. And we had a number of projects that day that we were engaging in. And I had never met Ryan before. I had heard of Ryan. I didn't know this was Ryan when he actually walked up. But I'd heard that there was this incredible guy on the east side that, you know, was kind of just on a one-man mission to clean up that side of town. So in any event, this guy walks up to me, and we're kind of, you know, we're breaking up into into our groups and we're getting ready to tackle everything from gardening to, you know, what are some of the other things we did that day? We rototilled and planted, and we put some wood chips down. I mean, there were just a number of projects. And this guy comes up to me, and it was, it was trash or nothing. Said, look, I'm here to pick up the trash. And we said, great. So it was probably about nine o'clock in the morning. And this guy, you know, walks off with a number of bags and returned a number of times. And he was there with us until the very end of the event. I think it was 6:00, 7:00 PM. And he was there picking things up. And that was when I actually got to to meet this guy. And then he introduced himself as Ryan Kost. And so immediately I knew who he was, and I felt like I was in front of almost a living legend. And 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 I thought, you know, we had a conversation, and I thought, man, this guy gets it. So many people, when we do trash cleanup and things, you know, some people say, what a waste of time. You're not really making a difference. And people don't really understand the impact that that has on commerce, on property values, on community pride in terms of inspiring others. There there's so much baked into just the beautification of a community. And and the cleanliness has so much to do with with that, and Ryan gets that. And so I, you know, I wanted to do something, because, you know, we we actually Facebook friended each other, I think, maybe the next day, or it was within a few days of the event. And I realized, wow, okay, this wasn't just kind of a flash in the pan for Ryan. Ryan is out there each and every. Ryan is out there each and every day, five, six, seven contractor bags a day. And this is after, he's, you know, he's a public servant. He services our state of Michigan employee. And so after, you know, a long, hard day of work, there he is on the east side. He's, you know, cleaning up the underpasses. He's cleaning up the riverbanks. He's in neighborhoods. He's in parks. He's, you name it, he's there. The only thing I wish I could do is steal him over to the southwest side of the city because the east side has never looked better, in my opinion. So what I wanted to do really quickly was put together a tribute for Ryan. And very quickly, I'll read through it. I am not going to read. There's a section that outlines all of the different places that he has, has attended to. And to be quite frank, this is a living document and this is already outdated anyway. But we'd be here all night if I was to read all of those. So I'm going to read through this very quickly. It says, whereas Ryan Kost, born in Lansing and currently residing with his husband, Daniel Allen, on the east side of the city, has the core values of community service and a love for Lansing instilled in him at an early age by his Nana, Betty Kost, and his Bumpa Ted Kost. And whereas Ryan Kost, currently working as a public servant for the state of Michigan, located at the east side of the city in two thousand and nineteen, with the intention of getting involved in his new neighborhood and the broader community as an effort to honor and further the legacy of his grandparents. And whereas since two thousand and nineteen, Ryan Kost has worked incredibly hard alongside his husband to invest in his home and neighborhood in Lansing, restoring their home to its original glory and seeking out opportunities for public service and civic engagement. And whereas Ryan Kost began daily pickup of trash and debris on the east side of the city this past spring, regularly meeting neighbors and concerned citizens and inspiring many others to get involved in cleaning up and beautifying our community. To date, Ryan has removed more, and again, this is already outdated, more than two hundred contractor sized bags of garbage from our city, in addition to bought car parts, televisions, tires, plastic chairs and the like. Whereas Ryan Kost has continued his daily pickup with the intention to not stop until the city is clean, people are inspired to take care of their trash. The citizens of the city are satisfied with the look and feel of our community. To date, Ryan has cleared trash and debris from the following areas. And there are a lot of them. So I'm going to go ahead and skip through to the next. Whereas, in cleaning up and beautifying vast portions of our city, Ryan has also reported several major issues to city officials and has ensured they were attended to, including among others, missing storm drain covers, damaged streetlights, potholes and more. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Lansing City Council wishes to recognize Ryan Kost for his selfless commitment to the city of Lansing, our citizens and business owners, and would like to thank him for his above and beyond service to the greater community. In recognizing and thanking Ryan Kost for such selfless acts, we acknowledge the impact of civic engagement of this variety as it fosters a sense of community pride, inspires others to engage in similar efforts, leads to enhanced safety, protects property values and inspires commerce, removes toxins from land and adjacent waterways and simply results in a more beautiful, livable community. Ryan Kost, thanks so much. With that being said, I would like to allow him to just say a few words, but before that, I would like to move the resolution of tribute.
Sure, the resolution has been moved. So did you want him to, I'm sorry, and speak before we vote or?
Why don't we take, why don't we take the vote and then we can, then we can hear from Ryan? Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, I don't see any hands, so why don't you please call the roll.
Okay, on the tribute, Councilmember Spitzley.
Absolutely. I follow him on Facebook and see all the places that he's so, you know, beautified on the east side. And so I'm so happy to vote yes on this. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes, and I too want to give you my gratitude for the work that you do. It's much appreciated. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Ryan.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes, thank you very much, Ryan.
Seven yeas, zero nays, the resolution is adopted.
Very good. Ryan, thank you for all the work you've done to keep our city clean and beautiful. Would you like to say a few words? The floor is yours.
Can you hear me? Great. I just want to say that I appreciate all the kind words that were said by the council members. You know, I don't do this for, for me. I do it because I get to meet the kids in the neighborhood and the people that live in these neighborhoods. And I get to see their faces, that someone cares and is walking up and down their streets, picking up garbage or putting in little planters. I just put some flowers in yesterday over by Malcolm Axe to honor the victims we've lost in the last couple of weeks, gun violence. So it's not for me, it's for, for the city. So I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Spoken, spoken like a true public servant. I appreciate, we appreciate everything you've done. And really, Adam, thank you for bringing, bringing Ryan's work to the attention of the city council.
My absolute pleasure.
All right, that is, I think that is it for the surprise special ceremonies, Mr. Clerk. So we'll let you get on the agenda you carefully constructed.
Okay, so we are two comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Anyone have anything to add? Oh, okay. I see Councilmember Spitzley beat us to the punch first. Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes, Chatty Cathy tonight, I guess. I wanted to make a couple of announcements. The first one was, I was along with Councilmember Jackson at a town hall event last week at the village to hear the parents and the families of victims. And I know Councilmember Hussein wanted to attend and he wasn't able to attend, but Councilmember Jackson was there. Candidate Clarida Duncan, candidate Farhan Sheikh Omar was there as well, but just hearing the families and their, their pain. And, you know, they want to be a part of the solution. But it was a very powerful moment and a powerful time. And I just wanted to acknowledge that and thank the village for, for hosting that. My other, just mentioned about the Juneteenth festivities over the weekend, the parade, the event at Alfreda Schmidt, and then the event at Rio Town. It was just a wonderful opportunity to be out and talk to people. And I talked to a ton of people at, at both of those events. And I'll say a little bit more about that later on. But it was, it was a great event. And of course, we want to thank Marilyn Rogers. She was amazing. I saw the mayor there, Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Congresswoman Slotkin was there. Finally, I want to mention that this Saturday, June twenty-fourth, is the Tacos and Tequila Festival at the Jackson Field where the Lugnuts play. And the charity partner for this event is Footprints of Michigan. I will be volunteering at tacos and tequilas. So if you see me, come and say hello. But come out and enjoy the festival there and know that part of your proceeds are going to go to a great cause, which is Footprints of Michigan. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember, let me look, hold on. Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, President. I would like to invite you all to participate in the Southeast Lansing Team Up to Clean Up event hosted by the South Lansing Business Association. It is this Wednesday, June twenty-third, from one thirty PM to three thirty PM. We would be meeting at St. Michael's Episcopal Church, that's sixty-five hundred Amwood Drive between Menards and Target in South Lansing. Anyone is invited, making, that's willing to make a difference in Southeast Lansing community. Children may attend, but please bring your parents with you. And we will be beautifying one half square mile of Southeast Lansing, I ninety-sixth Cedar Jolly in Pennsylvania. Once again, that is this Wednesday, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, from one thirty PM to three thirty PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garza. Vice President Hussein.
Thank you so much. I'd first like to wish Councilman Garza a happy birthday. He's twenty-five today, although he doesn't look a day over twenty-two. No, but, but seriously, I really, I respect, you know, Councilman Garza for the work that he does as part of this body. The work that he does is advocate for plumbers and pipefitters across the state. And then he is just an incredible family man. So happy birthday. You enjoy every bit of this week, my man. You deserve it. The second piece is, we have heard a lot of concerns regarding Value Land in the Colonial Village Plaza, as well as Kroger on West Homes. And I want to give some credit to Councilman Garza, Councilman Wood and Mayor Shore. They've done quite a bit of work to try to figure out whether the rumors are true. And what are those rumors? First, there's some rumors out there that Value Land is going to transition as early as June twenty-fifth from, you know, selling produce and having their meat counter and frozen foods to being basically like a discount outlet. And then the second rumor is that, and when I say rumor, I mean, there's a lot of people, you know, talking about this, it really has permeated through the community. The second piece is that Kroger is closing and that's imminent. And so Mayor Shore with some of his contacts, and I believe Councilwoman Wood as well, they were able to connect with Kroger Corporate. And we have been able to determine that the rumors regarding Kroger are absolutely false. And that there are, or I should say, is zero chance that that will be closing. They don't know where that rumor stemmed from. But it's a store that does a lot of business. They understand, I think, the importance to that community in terms of access to fresh produce and things of that nature. And then with regard to the Value Land, that one does seem to have some leg. We are still trying to get information. I know Councilman Wood and Mayor Shore are kind of working their contacts to try to figure out exactly what it is they are looking to do. Because if we're going to advocate in the way that some of our citizens and some of our businesses, candidly, businesses are reaching out too, because they understand the importance. You know, when you look at anchor stores like this, when you look at vehicular traffic driven to the, to the area and foot traffic, and they understand how important it is that secondary commerce to their businesses. And then you have the citizens just understanding how important those businesses are, obviously to their community and to the well-being of their citizens. So a lot of advocacy, but we don't even know where and how to advocate until we know what is true and what's not. So we will keep you abreast, but we certainly want you to understand that behind the curtain, people are working the issue. So again, the Councilman Garza, Mayor Shore and Councilman Wood, I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Moving, I think, you know, I have to mention something too. So many of you, obviously, all of us are aware of the occurrence and frequency of gun violence incidents and homicide that has resulted as, from gun violence in our community. There's, I know there's a lot of work going on. Some of it will be discussed this evening. Just wanted to let folks know that the president of the school board and I will be hosting a community conversation on gun violence on the twenty-ninth of June at six thirty PM at Everett High School. Although I will plan on doing a lot more listening than conversing. We've asked Dr. Brian Beverly, who is an expert facilitator and former school board member, as well as father of students in Lansing School District, to facilitate the discussion with our community. I think the target, the, the audience for this, this group is our youth. So we're, but we're encouraging all Lansing residents who wish to participate in this conversation to be there on the twenty-ninth of June at six thirty PM. So that's, that's what I have for tonight. Mr. City Clerk, any comments for you?
Yes, thank you, President Spatafor. I do have a couple of comments. As many of you know, this is a city election year and we do have the August primary coming up. On Thursday of this week, my office will be sending out nine thousand ballots, absentee voter ballots to folks' homes. So watch your mailbox. If you have requested an absentee ballot, you should be getting that probably by Saturday, if you've already put that request in. And if you don't get it by mid next week and you believe you've put a request in, please contact my office and somehow perhaps it didn't make it to us or there's some other issue, although we generally follow up with you if we find an issue. For those of you that have not yet requested vote at home ballots, there's still plenty of opportunity to do that. The easiest way to do that is to go to lansingvotes.com. Right there on that page, there is a vote at home button. You can hit that. And then there is a link on that page to an online absentee ballot request form, which for the online request, it is required that you have a Michigan driver's license or Michigan ID form. If you don't have that, there are options for you to print out and mail or fax or email in a signed form. But still plenty of time to get an absentee ballot. On the August primary ballot will be the Office of Mayor, the city council at large, two of the positions are up for election this year. And then the second ward, for those who live in the second ward, will appear on the August primary ballot as well as the essential services mileage renewal. So those are the only things that will appear on the August primary ballot. The fourth ward, since there are only two candidates for one position, the fourth ward skips the primary and goes directly to the November election. Similarly, the Office of City Clerk, since there's only one candidate, skips the August primary and goes directly to the November election. So don't be surprised at how short the ballot might be. There will be a little bit more in November for some of you. And with that.
I'd just like to say congratulations on your primary and general election victory.
Thank you. Well, you know, somebody could still do a write-in in November, so you never know. So with that, we are to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the audience with a community event, you have, we all have one minute. Please use the raise hand function to let yourself be known, which is raise hand or Alt-Y on a Windows, Option-Y on an Apple or star nine on a phone. And I see we have Loretta Stanaway has an event. So go ahead, Loretta.
Good evening. The Friends of Lansing Historic Cemetery is hosting an open to the public picnic in the Fratcher Memorial Garden at Mount Hope Cemetery on Sunday, July eighteenth, from one to two thirty PM. You can either bring your own picnic or we'll be providing Arby's sliders, chips and pop and cookies. And they will all be individually wrapped for your safety. You can reserve a spot or let us know of your interest by going to our Facebook page at Lansing Cemeteries or our website at F O L H C dot wildapplicott.org.
All right, thank you for that announcement. And seeing no others, we'll move on. And I will announce that now is the time to virtually raise your hand if you wish to comment on legislative matters. So please begin raising your hand for that legislative matters. Does tonight include, there are no public hearings, but it includes the ordinances for passage, the consent agenda items, as well as the resolutions for action items on the council agenda. So if you're following along with the printed agenda, that's, you can comment on items number three through twenty-three on the agenda. And we'll give you up until three minutes into the public speaking. So please begin raising your hand. And with, and again, that star nine on a phone, raise hand icon on multiple things, or if you can't find that, Alt-Y on a Windows or Option-Y on an Apple. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Clerk. I'll, I'll start off. I want to comment on Councilman Hussein's comments on Value Land. Thank you, Councilman, for contacting me about that a little while ago. Thank you, Councilwoman Wood, for contacting me about that as well. I actually had to stop there today on my way home to buy some stuff because it's my neighborhood. And I did have a conversation with the manager who I know. And the answer is yes. It, it will be shutting down as it is on June twenty-fifth. Apparently, Mount Hope, also the one on West Saginaw, as well as the one in the city of Leslie, they're all shutting down. Their corporate is shutting them down. Apparently, the one in Mount Hope is going to be reopened in July as a, a non-perishable items discount product store. So it's basically the things that they would sell, otherwise Spartan brands that are non-perishable will be there. I am reaching out to the corporate tomorrow. We have, I spoke with our LEAP staff. We're going to be reaching out to them to figure out what's going on. Again, we had heard some rumors and have been trying to reach out. Now we'll be getting with corporate. So I know I've spoken with both Councilman Hussein and Wood as recently as this afternoon, and I appreciate your advocacy. And certainly, I've heard about it from, from folks in my neighborhood as, as we shop there. And this is a, this is very upsetting. I'll, I'll agree with Councilman Hussein on Kroger. When he called me about that rumor, I called their corporate. And their vice president was, she was stunned to even hear the rumor. They, Kroger is in for South Lansing a hundred percent. They just did some, some new work about, what, a year and a half ago. It's an incredible place. When I, when I go to Everett, I stop there from time to time. So they, they are still in. So they, they are still in. So thank you for all that, those updates, Councilman Hussein. I want to congratulate a whole variety of people since the last council meeting. Anybody who went to blockade, it was awesome. There were a few thousand people downtown. It was incredible shutting down Washington Square and seeing all the booths and it was just incredible. I want to thank Lansing five oh one. I want to thank DLI. It really was just fantastic. And then similarly, shutting down the street in Rio Town over the weekend for Juneteenth. I have people telling me, hey, let's shut down every street and put some festivals in. We're really seeing a lot of excitement, people coming back and hanging out. Again, seeing people in Rio Town for the Juneteenth Festival was great. So that was, that was a lot of fun. I also want to, like Councilwoman Spitsy, I want to congratulate Marilyn Plummer and Marilyn Rogers. And the Juneteenth Committee, the, the car caravan was a lot of fun. We, we, we honked the horn. We had a really good time. And, and then we had a really good event at the Schmidt Center. If you weren't there, you missed out because the ribs were. And you couldn't be anywhere near without smelling those ribs. They were so good. And it was just a great event. So thank you to Councilwoman Spitzley for to Congresswoman Slotkin. Really was a great event. I also want to thank everybody who came out to the mayor's river walk last Saturday. It was hot. But we still had a river walk and run. I got twenty-eight thirteen and a five K, which was first place for my age group, Councilman Jackson. I was sorry not to see you there. A gentleman ran it in twenty-one and change and I thought, man, he can give Brian a run for his money. So we got to get you back out there because he was, he was bragging. And I was like, oh, you haven't seen our councilman run this race. So thank you, everyone. I want to congratulate some of our south side stores. We had some ribbon cuttings. Detroit Frankie's and Good Truckin' on the south side on Pennsylvania is now open. If you haven't been there, go. Detroit Frankie's is incredible. Good Truckin' is good Truckin'. And now with the second place open. I'm sure Councilman Garza is going to hit that every time he goes home. But the food is unbelievable. They got some other products there. That was great. I want to thank Councilman Garza again. We did a rib, or a, a ribbon cutting. At Rim King's on the south side. Wonderful, new small business owner who wants to help out the community, sell some, some tires. A little bit more affordable with some rims. They had a great barbecue and welcomed the whole south side. It was awesome. We also saw the Wendy's on the south side completely redone. And we're excited to see, you know, them putting some money into, into that, that store in the south side. Otherwise, I want to let everyone know that the camps have started at Foster and Schmidt. So our kids are, you know, things for our kids to do. We certainly want things for our kids to do. We've been talking about that as part of relieving. Some of the gun violence is making sure our youth have things to do and Lansing has reopened our camps. We have limited staffing, so, so we're working on that, but they are open. Our concerts in the park have started again. I had a great time at Moore's Park with, with Root Doctor. If you haven't seen them play, Freddie Cunningham's an old friend of mine and he is just fantastic. And so Root Doctor played at Moore's Park this Wednesday at St. Joe Park. There'll be another concert at seven. I can't remember the, the band. There's also a movie at Foster this Friday, A Dog's Life. I believe it's Friday evening, so show up. As I reminded everybody, the July Fourth Parade is happening, but it's not July fourth, it's July third. The July third parade is happening this year at eleven AM downtown. And then we'll have our fireworks July fourth in the evening. And don't forget the lug nuts play all three nights, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, back to back to back with fireworks. Want to remind everybody that property taxes are going to be due and our property and our income, but our property taxes can be made. In person at MSU FCU, online or by mail or with appointment with our treasurer's office at City Hall. But don't forget the Dropbox outside to drop off the property taxes or you can go in at MSU FCU, which is right around the corner or any of them in the Lansing area. Or paid online or by mail. Second to last, our, our Mayor's Racial Justice and Equity Alliance report will be released tomorrow. So people can check that out at five thirty on Zoom. It's going to be released for community thoughts and feedback and those, and then it'll be updated afterwards. Also, feedback can be given at MRJE at lansingmi.gov. And then finally, I have Nick Tate on here. He would like to update council on the reopening plan. We are planning to reopen city buildings and he is going to give you a quick update. Do we, oh, there he is.
No, Nick's here. I will say Sherry did turn on the timer, Nick. Don't take that as intimidation, but maybe a subtle hint.
He'll get it done in less than three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, President Spatterford. So as this council may be aware. The reopening initially was predicated on a return to work plan that we revised effective June ninth, two thousand twenty-one. At that time, I'd mentioned the mayor that, you know, within the next seven to ten days, there's a very good chance that the, the plan will be outdated in a short period of time. And that in fact happened. When we began planning reopening, the thought was to, to use a lot of the, the lessons that we've learned over the last year. Mask usage, social distancing, Plexiglas, things of that nature. But with the announcement last week, we are obviously going to follow the governor's orders and effective tonight. The mask mandate will no longer be in effect. The, the capacity limits will no longer be in effect. So we're going to, as we have, follow the state orders moving forward from today. I know that there are certain departments that are special within the city. One in particular is our district court. They still are abiding by the Supreme Court Administrative Office, which is requiring message. So we're trying to work with them to make sure that, that not only that they have the things that they need, but that they're following the orders that they need to. So Anethia has been great with working on, working with us and letting us know if there's anything else that we need. We're also really sensitive to the fact that we're bringing employees back and employees have different comfort levels in terms of interacting with people. You know, as, as we all know, a lot of our employees have worked through the pandemic uninterrupted, which, which has just been frankly. Inspiring to see them come in every day, but we've also had a lot of employees that are working from home that had before the pandemic, regular interaction with the public. And have some apprehension. And to the extent that we can do anything to help them with that, for example, if they want to keep up Plexiglas. We're willing to do that. And we've asked the supervisors and directors to work with those employees to figure out what they need in order to feel comfortable as they return back to work. So the reopening is going to occur July twelfth, I assume, as, as, as has been consistent throughout the pandemic. It will not be a linear path. I can certainly see that we'll have to do some readjustments as we bring people back. But those are the overarching themes and some of the things that we plan on doing as, as, at July twelfth. Comes up, so certainly would, would like to get any input that the city council has regarding our plans or anything else like that. Because I, I know if there's anything that I've learned over the last twelve to fifteen months, it's that you've got to rely on others to provide their input. Because we can't, we can't make it through something like this, a generational defining event by ourselves. So we certainly welcome any sort of input that that council, that the council has moving forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. Are there questions for our mayor or deputy mayor on this plan? I know we were going to, like I said, this is, we don't typically do a lot of questions at this point, but because we're going to do this account, we didn't want to give you all a chance to ask questions. All right. I think everyone's cognizant of the fact that we're on item three, an hour fifteen minutes into the meeting. So maybe we'll get some questions on offline, but it sounds like you all have been very adaptive. I know that we are anxiously waiting the return to full in-person events too on our floor. So thank you for that and thank you for keeping us updated.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you all set? All right, Mr. Clerk, it's all, it's all you.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters. And again, that is eligible items are items. Three through twenty-three on the agenda. And it looks like we have two speakers, so you've got about three more minutes if you want to sign up. We have Loretta Stanaway, followed by Heather Holwin. So go ahead, Loretta.
Good evening. Participating remotely from Tucson, Arizona, where it is a hundred and eight degrees. I am speaking tonight in support of adding five police officers to our staff. If you recall, last week I asked for information on how many shifts this year thus far we had operated with. Minimum staffing levels. Nobody, by the way, got back with me on that. But what I would like to see in light of all this recent uptick in the severe crime is for a press conference to be held. By the mayor and the chief or interim chief. And at that press conference, I would hope that there would be no tap dancing. Around words or mincing words, that it would be very clear and that an announcement would be made that every available officer. Will be flooding the city twenty-four seven in a concerted and concentrated effort. To stop this gun violence. And that we will be bringing in VCI and MSP and DEA and FBI. Homeland Security, ICE, ATF, Justice, any agency that could be helpful in this approach would be involved. And I think that it should be very clearly said that if you are involved in guns. And drugs and gangs or any of those know now that we are coming for you. And if you are using juvies to avoid charges, know that we will be charging every juvenile that we possibly can charge as an adult. As an adult. And I think that our, our force has been handcuffed for too long. And needs to be cut loose and let loose to do what they're supposed to be doing out there, which is preserving and protecting the public. We have had too many instances of misguided and well-intentioned police reforms or decriminalization efforts lately. Things that take tools out of the toolbox of the police. For example, there was an instance in this last month where police stopped a car with a million dollars worth of meth in it. In Lansing, we could not have currently stopped that vehicle. When you coddle lawbreakers and condone lawlessness, you get lawlessness. And right now it has devolved to the point where people are literally getting away with murder. We need to clearly say it stops, it stops here, it stops now. We're coming for you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And that leads us to Heather Holwin.
Go ahead. I'm unmuted, sorry. First of all, I apologize because Loretta just totally threw me off. Forgive me for saying, Loretta, if you are remotely speaking to us, that you have absolutely no touch with what's going on in the city. I am speaking on behalf of many people here in Lansing who absolutely. Do not want five more police officers to break up what will be probably ninety-five percent. Lawful gatherings of youth that are trying to find something to do in the city. And there's absolutely nothing for them to do. They have no resources. They have no stewardship. They have nobody advocating for them. Except for a very few nonprofit organizations. That money needs to go to the community and people who are trying to help the community, like the village, like the Fire. Firecracker Foundation and others who are trying to help the youth find an alternative to these. Oh, I don't want to, these, these groups that they're being brought into because they don't have. Anybody champion for them. I work at the Center for Forensic Psychiatry and the young men that I talk to. Were left behind. And by some God's good grace, ended up in a facility who is there trying to help them. But those are the same kids that are in the streets and don't have any place to go. The police are not going to help. That money should not go to the police. The last thing I do want to say is. I had my car stolen by those kids, right? I called the police, even though it was my second thought of what to do. The police, I live a block away from the police station. It took twenty minutes for an officer to come. Dispatch never gave them the description of my car. Ten hours later, I found my own car. And when I was getting it towed, a detective called me to say, I'm the detective on your case. I'm just letting you know that we haven't found your car yet, but we're working on it. When I had to tell her that I was with my car and had already found it, she was rather embarrassed. I have police drive up and down my street every hour on the hour and they still couldn't do anything. We don't need any police on the streets. We don't need more of them. They're not doing anything except for putting information in a database that just sits. So I am going to reiterate again that five more police officers on the street.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
No good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clerk, you're muted, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. That was our final speaker. So we are to ordinances for passage. And our first one, we have an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan to amend the Lansing codified ordinances. By amending chapter six, six, four, section six, six, four point zero one. By repealing subsection B prohibiting loud and boisterous conduct. Is read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee on Equity, Diversity and Inclusion and is on the order of immediate passage.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to defer to Councilmember Jackson.
Hey, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. So this first one to amend the chapter by taking out loud and boisterous. It's amend because we're not taking out the entire ordinance, just subsection B that prohibits loud and boisterous con- conduct. So a thing to note is that subsection A says that no person shall create or engage in any disturbance. Or fight in a public place. And there was some discussion in committee about this and basically. There's some opinion that subsection A could in fact cover any out of control disturbances of people who are. Yelling and or and or fighting with each other. The city attorney's office did say that loud and boisterous is one of the ordinances that they use. And that they like it because it's been proven in court to be constitutional. And that subsection A has not necessarily been proven because it hasn't been, no one sued the city and it hasn't gone to a final review yet. But in my opinion and some other people's opinion, loud and boisterous is, you know, in itself. Not a dangerous and should not be a criminal behavior, being loud and boisterous shouldn't, but maybe creating a disturbance or causing a fight. Or disturbing the peace are all things that are more, I don't know. Malicious or culpable instead of loud and boisterous. Loud and boisterous is, it would be hard for a police officer to determine. Who's loud and boisterous and who isn't. And that shouldn't be the police officer's job. They should be able to determine who is creating a disturbance or fighting in a public place, which would. Lead to somebody being arrested or cited. So this. Here we are just striking subsection B and keeping the remainder of the ordinance that still prohibits. Disturbance in public and fighting. So with that, I would move for repeal. For amended, for amendment.
Move the resolution or move the ordinance, excuse me. Very good. There is proper motion before, so there's no further discussion. Seeing none with the clerk, please call the roll. Okay, I'm sorry, Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. I was trying to do the official raise your hand, but.
Well, you did it, so thank you.
Okay, so I just wanted to point out, because this, this was discussed in committee, what, what police have to still be able to act. And it's in the reference to La Piccina Cubano downtown. I don't know if you guys ever, I love them and I'm on their Facebook page. And they posted recently about a very upsetting event that they had happen at their. At their restaurant where a gentleman came in and attempted to steal the tip jar. And, and it caused a big disturbance. He ended up standing outside of the business and pounding on the window, kept pounding and screaming at the window. And, and the police that arrived there basically said, no, I'm sorry, she called the second time. They said that they couldn't do anything until he broke something. So, you know, in this case, I think that we need to make clear that there are laws that can be used. And, and the rest of this ordinance works for that and should have worked for that. Like that wasn't just boisterous conduct. Um, boisterous conduct. It was, there was a whole lot of other disturbing the peace and potentially. Uh, dangerous stuff happening there. And so I guess I'm a little discouraged that, that um, the police department chose not to. Address it, but um, it is available to use in situations like that. Um, so I just wanted to point that out. Um, that we just, maybe we have to do more uh. Education of those who are responding or taking the nine-one-one calls to know what actually warrants a response because that did. So, anyway. That's my, my two cents, and of course I'm supporting this, but um, I just needed to say that.
Glad we could help. Uh, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
On adoption of the ordinance, Councilmember Wood.
No.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
No.
Councilmember Hussein.
No.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
No.
Councilmember Spitzley.
No.
Two yeas, five yeas, the ordinance is not adopted. So that takes us to the next uh, ordinance for passage. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to amend the Lansing codified ordinances by amending chapter six-eight-eight. Section six-eight-eight-point-zero-five to provide that the penalty for violation. Of this ordinance shall be a municipal civil infraction is read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee on Equity, Diversity and Inclusion and is on the order of immediate passage.
Good, uh, Councilmember Jackson, I believe, uh, Councilmember Spitzley will hand it over to you, so I'm gonna call on you.
Jump over me.
Yeah, sorry, I was just gonna skip right over you, ma'am, I'm sorry.
It's fine.
Yes, thank you. So this ordinance that reads, no person shall climb. Peel, cut, deface, remove, injure, destroy any tree in any street, highway or park grass plot. Is being amended to become a civil infraction and not a um, misdemeanor punishable by arrest, jail. Probation and all that stuff. This would still prevent anybody from. I hate to say it, climbing a tree, but also doing those other things like damaging a tree, which is its own law misdemeanor of. Thou shall not maliciously destroy shrubs or trees or grass plots, which is a state statute. But either way, you won't be able to do it in the city or in through the state law. Um, but this is a compromise to make it a civil infraction because. I believe Parks Director Brett Koschinsky wanted it as one. Because some people do extreme hammocking apparently where they climb really high and create a risk to themselves. So they won't be arrested, they will be told to come down and given a civil infraction. And if they fail to obey an order or don't leave, then they could face prosecution after that. So with that, I would move the ordinance for amendment.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. The proper motion has been made. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none with the clerk, please call the roll.
On the ordinance, uh, amending six-eighty-eight-point-zero-five, Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
No.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Six yeas, one nay, the ordinance is adopted. And that takes us next to an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to amend the Lansing codified ordinances. By amending chapter six-eighty-eight, section six-eighty-eight-point-zero-seven to provide that the penalty for violation of this ordinance shall be. Municipal civil infraction, the or is read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee on Equity, Diversity and Inclusion and is on the order of immediate passage.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Six-eighty-eight oh-seven reads that no person shall bring animals, vehicles or bicycles onto any park. Or onto any grass plot in any street or deface the grounds or vegetation they're in. So this is, should be gone completely, um, as far as no bringing animals or bikes to the park. But instead it's gonna be amended if is voted upon to become a civil infraction. For similar reasons as the previous one is a compromise because Parks Director wanted it that way. Um, you know, this one also says you can't deface the grounds or vegetation, same with some of our other laws. Um, but at least now it's, you can risk bringing an animal. Or a bike into a park, but only you risk your financial civil infraction and not jail or misdemeanor. So. With that, I would move to amend the ordinance.
That is a proper motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, ask the clerk, please call the roll.
On adoption of the ordinance to amend uh, six-eighty-eight-point-zero-seven, Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. And that takes us to, um. The next one, uh, which is an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to amend. The Lansing codified ordinances by amending chapter sixteen-ten Uniform Fire. Code and Uniform Fire Code Standards is read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee of the Whole and is on the order of immediate passage.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, Clerk. Councilmember Garza from the Public Sir, Public Safety Committee.
Thank you. So, uh, the adoption of this International Fire Code, IFC two thousand and eighteen. Will allow the City of Lansing Fire Department Fire Prevention Office to maintain. The most up-to-date codes for the safety of our firefighters, businesses and the public. Uh, and that's a summary of what this is, uh, doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Garza? Just wanna thank the committee for their work on this and those involved bringing it before us and believe I heard a motion. So with that, we will, uh, take over to roll.
Okay.
I honestly, Jeremy, I, I think you made the motion. I didn't, I was.
Yeah.
You did. I couldn't remember, but thank you.
Um, yes, on the ordinance to adopt the new fire code, Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. I didn't receive a note on if this might need a media effect. I'm assuming it may.
Councilmember Garza, would you like to move for a media effect?
Uh, yes, I would. Thank you.
Very good. On the motion for media effect, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Uh, Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Okay, seven yeas, zero nays, immediate effect is ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we are to the consent agenda, which um, items ten and eleven have already been um, approved. So it's item seven through fifteen, uh, with the exceptions of item ten and eleven so far.
All right, Mr. Vice President, would you, I, before I do that, is there any item that anyone wishes to remove from the consent agenda that's as printed? All right, Mr. Vice President.
Sure, before moving, I'll quickly read those under the record. So the first is a confirmation of appointment. This is for Michael Mc- McKissick. As an at-large member of the Economic Development Corporation, uh, TIFLA and Lansing Brown, uh, Field Redevelopment Authority Board of Directors. That's for a term that expired February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, we also have a confirmation of appointment coming out of Cow today, Marine Saxon, as an at-large member of the Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority Board of Commissioners. For a term that expired June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, we have a confirmation of appointment for Gregory Friends as the fourth ward member of the Board of Public Service for a term that expired June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, we have a fireworks display license for Great Lakes Fireworks for the City of Lansing Independence Day Celebration. We have a liquor license for Acapulco Grill for transfer shares of ownership at three hundred North Clippert. We have a liquor license mid-Michigan supports, sports turf, sorry, LLC for a transfer to a class C license from a tavern license. And lastly, we have a resolution for a liquor license for Ocean Crab Inc. for SDM and class C license. Uh, Sunday sales AM, Sunday sales PM, dance, entertainment and outdoor services at seven-twenty-seven East Miller Road. And with that said, I would move the consent agenda.
Consent agenda has been moved. No discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
On the consent agenda, Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, the consent agenda is adopted, and that takes us to uh, the claim appeal for claim number eighteen-thirty-nine.
Uh, Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you very much. Um, this is a claim appeal for uh, three-twenty Hague Court. And it was a uh, special assessment for four hundred and ninety dollars for trash and debris. This was after, I believe, a um. There was a larger claim that we reduced it to, um. Five-twenty-four, am I, am I reading that correct? Is five-twenty-four what the original was or?
The Claims Review Committee actually reduced it, Councilmember, um, based on, I think there was an overage that they thought was unnecessary.
Okay, I wanted to make sure. All right, so, um, all right, so they ended up with four ninety. Um, for the trash and debris removal. We did see them in committee, um, and the committee voted unanimously to, um. Uphold the, uh, or deny the claim uphold the, the fine. So I would move as such. Although I did, I would mention, um, and you guys that were on the committee with me. At the end of the committee meeting, he did mention that, uh, you know, there was issues with mail and that there might be a way to offer. Certified mail or using email addresses or something like that. And we did discuss, just for the general public to know. That certified mail for announcing any kind of fines like this would be really prohibitive, um, uh, to our budget. Unless there was a way to do it where we attack, attach the um, fee for. The certified mail to the actual person who's receiving it. And so we are gonna look at different ways that we can um, facilitate the notification process. Um, and maybe make it easier for some or look at alternative methods. So I just wanted to say in case he's watching that we did hear you and we'll look into that. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar. That is a proper motion. Um, all those, the clerk, please call the roll on the resolution.
On claim number eighteen-thirty-nine, Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, the resolution is adopted. That takes us to orders to make safer demolish for fourteen-twelve West Ionia Street.
Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So what we have before us is fourteen-twelve West Ionia Street. Original red tag date was March fourth of two thousand and nineteen. It was submitted into make safer demolish process of January twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty. Uh, the property is vacant, um. Uh, more than a hundred and eighty days, the repairs exceed the building's SEV. The SEV is twenty-eight thousand, two hundred, structured as, as of May tenth, twenty-one is forty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And the total estimate of repairs is one hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighteen cents. And with that, I would move the resolution.
That is a proper motion. Is there any questions? Councilmember Wood.
Yes, um, Councilmember Garza was not at, um, he was on, um. Business and was not able to be at the meeting that, uh, when we had the discussion on this. Um, both this one and the next one, uh, when talking to the property owners. They are working on these properties and, um, to the next public safety meeting. If a plan is presented to the Public Safety Committee, we, um, may be coming back and amending. Um, this uh, resolution to allow them to have more time. But with, what we had decided in the committee was to move this forward until we had, um, that done through the code compliance office. So I just wanted to make sure that the committee was aware, um, the council members were aware that this might be coming back to, to you at another time. Uh, with, um, more time given to these, uh, two properties.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. So does that mean we are, uh, uh, putting these two properties on hold then until we meet?
No, we're, no, we're just, we're moving them forward and we will amend it. What we had decided was we would amend it if, um, they meet the requirements, um, that were needed.
Okay.
So there's, proper motion is before us on the order to make safer demolish. Uh, would the clerk please call the roll?
On, uh, fourteen-twelve West Ionia Street, Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, the resolution is adopted. That takes us to, uh, orders for make safer demolish at twenty-one oh-nine Warden.
Councilmember Garza, I'll call on you, but do you want, uh, Councilmember Wood to take the lead on this?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay, Councilmember Wood.
This is the same situation as the one previous. Uh, we're moving forward out of committee to make safer demolish. Uh, they were given, um, instructions during the committee that they needed to demonstrate. Uh, financial, um, stability to be able to make the, um. The necessary repairs to pull out permits as well as put together a timeline. They are working with code compliance on that, but we did tell them that we were moving forward on this. If that is done. At the next, um, public safety meeting, we will receive a recommendation from, uh, code compliance. And at that time we can come back and amend, um, this order.
Thank you very much, um.
And so I would move it.
Thank you. There is a motion for us. Any discussion on the side of? Mr. Clerk, seeing no discussion, could you please call the roll on the resolution?
Okay, on twenty-one oh-nine Warden, Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays, the resolution is adopted. And that takes us to the grant application for the Community Correction Program sub-.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, uh, President Spatafor. Um, this is a resolution that we see on a regular basis, uh, with this program. This is the, uh, Community Corrections Advisory Board Funding Application. Um, the application is very similar to, um, last year's, um. Seventy-seven percent of the dollars that come in for this are used for programming. Twenty-nine percent which come from Ingham County are used toward administrative costs and three-point-five percent that is received. From the City of Lansing is also used for administrative, uh. Part of, of the budget. Um, this past year due to COVID, there was an increase in domestic violence. And they were able, they had the capacity, um, to be able to, um, move those cases, um, into the, uh, appropriate. Um, uh, services that they have available. Um, they also had a, um, increase in opiate, um, addiction. And they were able, um, to use the residential treat. um, addiction and they were able, um, to use the residential treatment pro.
Is that her or me?
It's not you. Councilmember Wood, we seem to have lost you.
And, um, this is, uh, again, the thirtieth year, um, for them, and I would move, um, this resolution that allows, uh, the Ingham County Board Chair to authorize the signing of the necessary, um, documents, um, to move forward the, um, grant application.
No one tell her because that's a proper motion. So, um, any further discussion, uh, please, uh, raise your hand. Seeing none, if the clerk, please call the roll.
Yeah, on the Community Corrections Grant, Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Seven years, zero days, the resolution is adopted. That takes us to the grant acceptance for the COPS grants.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. Um, what we have before us is the, uh, twenty twenty COPS Hiring Program, um, Grant. Uh, that has been awarded to the City of Lansing. What this will allow is for us to hire five additional officers. Um, this, um, particular grant program only allows us to hire at entry level positions. I know there's been some discussion about the possibility of hiring additional investigators, things like that. This grant does not allow for that. Um, this grant, um, is, um, in the amount of, um, six hundred, um, and twenty-five thousand, um, dollars, which is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per officer. And, uh, the local match is nine hundred and fifteen thousand, um, twelve dollars. This grant pays only salary and benefits. The, uh, uniforms and the rest of this, um, comes out of our grant, uh, match that we have to put forward with this. Um, this is a three-year grant. Um, this pays, um, for the first year. Uh, fully, the second year is a percentage, and then the third year, um, is paid for, um, by the city. Um, and getting the information, and I still believe, um, that we have Chief Green here, uh, that can speak to this. Um, i- is available as well. Um, that, um, we have, um, we do have vacancies, but in those vacancies, uh, we have eight positions that are, um, uh, were in the process of hiring that are certified or certifiable. Um, which means that they would be, uh, able to be out on the streets and not having to go through, um, the academy. Um, and, uh, with that, I, um, be glad to answer any additional questions, or as I said, we do have, um, the chief available to answer any questions, um, from council members at this time. And so I would move the acceptance of the grant.
The resolution has, proper motion has been made. Our first council member to make a comment is Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I do have a couple of questions. I have, I have a few questions. So, um, the grant, uh, uh, acceptance letter is June twenty twenty. Um, so I, I'm, I'm wondering why, what, what, what's been the holdup of, of, um, announcing this grant or bringing it on board? That's my first question.
Um. If Chief Green is here, he might be able to answer that, um, for us if we could bring that in. I know that in most of the justice grants, they lag back a year. So from the time that, um, the letters are awarded by the time they get out and that, we're, we're normally about a year behind. Um, Chief Green, isn't that correct?
Sorry, I, I, I lost you on, uh, rejoining there. What was the question?
The question was.
Why the, the, the award date is Ju- June twenty twenty? So why, why are we informing City Council of the grant now when it's, when we, we, we were awarded the grant last year, almost a year ago?
Yes, ma'am. So that's correct. We were awarded the grant last year, uh, July of twenty twenty. And we were told by the COPS office, uh, because we were under the impression that, uh, we would not gain acceptance of the grant. But we were told by the COPS office that, uh, you can accept the grant and you can, uh, defer the grant at any time. And so they gave us advice that they gave many police departments that were, uh, you know, experiencing, uh, the defund the police narrative. Uh, the general consensus to all the police departments primarily was to accept the grant. And at any time you could cancel it, but if you cancel it now, you could never accept it. Uh, and so we were given that advice and we thought it was pretty good advice. So we abide by it and, uh, now there's an opportunity for us to accept the grant and we can get an extension on the grant as well. And just one thing to, if I could just clarify one thing that, uh, Councilmember, um, Wood said. Now, this is a three-year grant. So, uh, there, there's monies granted for three years. And then the fourth year, you have to keep those positions on the books.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, so my, my next one, so we have not hired these police officers at this point. Is that correct?
That is correct. We have not commenced to do anything except to, uh, alert the council at this time that it is a viable option, uh, to move forward with it.
Thank you, Chief. So the, the press release that was issued, um, by the mayor, by you mayor, basically said that these police officers would be, um, you know, out to help address the increase in violence. I mean, how long is it going to take for these police officers to be hired and trained and put on the street? I mean, the summer, we, we, I, it seems to me that the summer will be over by the time these police officers are trained and put on the, on the street.
We will go into a hiring process immediately. The chief has already spoken with Linda Sanchez Gazella. Um, as Councilmember Wood indicated, our preference certainly are for the certified certifiables. Then we can hire and put them on the streets immediately. They'll also have more experience. Um, we have a number of those right now in background for the existing vacancies we have. Um, we also, of course, have options with having, uh, uh, police officers in the academy, but the preference is to bring them on immediately. So we are hopeful that the ones that we have right now, uh, are going to clear background and it seems pretty positive. And we will go into a hiring, uh, immediately. We are continually hiring because we have, um, we continually get vacancies because of retirement, because of resignation, because, um, officers are fired. Um, so we're continually in that process, but we will once again actively go out for, um, certified certifiables to try and bring in police officers to, um, to staff up right now. My, my intention, and I've talked to the, the chief and the interim chief about this, is to have, uh, more officers on at night. As we're seeing a lot of our problems at night, this isn't just about bringing in five officers as, you know, as most of a shift. This is about putting more bodies on, especially at night.
Well, and, and I appreciate that response. Um, Councilmember Wood said that we already have eight openings, and I thought that she said that, you know, those were the officers that were going to be more experienced. These are new entry level officers.
No, it doesn't.
As we're talking about, and those five off, that was, so, and those were the five officers you mentioned in the press release. And so that's why I was wondering how long it would take them to come up on board. But nevertheless, so, you know.
No.
First of all, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry, just to, it, the, the new five officers, they are not, they don't have to be entry level officers. We're just going to hire five more. So we've got the eight that are in progress right now. The other five can be hired. Uh, again, they can be certified certifiables also. So we can fill the vacancies we have and have five new certified certifiables also.
That's, that's not what the resolution, is that what the resolution says? Because the resolution says entry level officers, and I thought that the grant said entry level, but so if we can clarify that, that would be great. But for me, you know, I, I am inclined to, to support this. And the reason why I am inclined to support this is that this weekend while I was at Juneteenth, um, both at Alfreda Schmidt and at Rio Town, you know, I asked members of our community, young and old, you know, what their thoughts were on the additional, on the addition of these five police officers through this grant opportunity. And again, I apologize. I've been hoarse for weeks. Um, and, and, and most of them were overwhelmingly supportive, but they had the same questions that I had, which, you know, was when these officers would be hired, how long would it take for them to be trained, um, you know? And, you know, if you say later in the summer to any of those questions, then what's the plan for these new officers to be brought on? And then a lot of folks, um, when I asked them what their opinion was, they said they were baffled. They were baffled because it seems to be the plan, it seems to be a disjointed process. And so the next question was, what is the rest of the plan to address the underlying causes of increased crime and violence in Lansing and Ingham County? The majority of them seem to impact our young adults. And I, I, I agree with those questions, you know, it, I, I, I want to express while we're doing this, my extreme disappointment over the creation of the, of your recent task force to address, um, the increased gun violence in the city. You know, it, the violence affects all of the City of Lansing, but, you know, you've, you've chosen to, again, you know, announce another task force made up of a subset of your existing cabinet. You know, excluding folks in the community who have been a part of the solution and who have been working for years on this solution. Our community, our community is in crisis. I'm sorry, it's in crisis.
Councilmember Spitzley, this is not directed germane to the resolution. You have council. For this opportunity, it's not germane to the resolution. That's the ruling of.
Well, then I will use, I will, I will do this in my, in my end comments. So I'll finish my questions. Um, so I'm asking about, um, the five officers about when they're, if, so if we can ask this, when are they going to be on board? How are they going to be impacting the gun violence? It seems to me, and I'm reading the resolution, and maybe I'm reading it wrong, that it says entry level. And so then if it's entry level, then how do we then train them in time for the summer? So those are my questions. I'll defer my other comments for the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Mr. Mayor.
President, um, Spatafor, um, if, um, we could have Chief Green explain entry level. Um, just because that doesn't necessarily mean a new officer. So, um.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
That may be good, Chief, if you could explain that to the, to the council. It appears to be a term, uh, some of us are interpreting differently.
Totally understand that. It's a term of art. Uh, but when you talk about entry level, meaning that they are just starting here at the Lansing Police Department. And, uh, specifically, it's been mentioned certified slash certifiable. Certified, uh, means that they have already, um, uh, gone through the academy and they've worked at another department. And so they are transferring here to the Lansing Police Department. Certifiable means that they're either in the academy about to graduate or, uh, just graduating from the academy, have not worked for another department. Uh, so entry level for us means that they're now starting here at the Lansing Police Department, uh, you know, as an A P O one. Uh, and so they're brand new, uh, as far as work is concerned. Uh, many of them do, will have some experience. Uh, you know, most recent, uh, process, we have a officer out of Chicago P D, another one out of Las Vegas Metro P D. Obviously, they have some experience, but they will come in as entry level officers to the Lansing Police Department.
That, that's helpful. I appreciate that. My final question is, is there a way to the, we have eight open positions. You know, as part of addressing the crime and as part of bringing on new entry level police officers. You know, we need to resolve the crimes that are existing in the cold cases. So where are we in bringing in more investigators to, to do that? And is that possible to bring in more investigators as we are bringing in more entry level? And I think, I know Councilmember Wood mentioned it a bit, but if you could elaborate on that, Chief, I'd appreciate it.
I'll say this, that, uh, you know, obviously we're aware that there's a little bit of a transition period, uh, to hire a new officer and for that new officer to start and, uh, to get through our field training officer program, there is a transition. Uh, we have put some things in place that, uh, those with experience, uh, would get through that process sooner, uh, as early as three months. Now, obviously that won't put them out on the street in a car by themselves. Uh, in August, but it will get them out there sooner. But what we were doing in interim is this, uh, we've reached out specifically on the issue of investigators is, uh, you know that we have a great partnership with the Michigan State Police Security Cities Partnerships. We've reached out to them and they awarded us an additional investigator. So we have that investigator already embedded and, uh, we're waiting on a word for an additional, uh, investigator, if possible. Uh, two investigative, seasoned investigators, uh, from the Michigan State Police that will start at our police department be integrated directly into, uh, our Criminal Investigations Division. And then the other thing we did, because we're, you know, because of the recent, um, you know, I hate to use the word uptick, but the recent surge of violence we saw in the city, uh, we also reached out to Ingham County Sheriff's Department. And we explained to them that our investigators, uh, many of them are working around the clock, uh, coming in, you know, midnight late. Uh, and so they agreed to also assist us as needed. Now, the other thing I, I've seen in the press is, uh, this call for, uh, federal law enforcement. Now, we have probably the most, uh, robust, uh, relationship with, uh, federal partners in this entire tri-county area. We have a task force officer that's connected and embedded into the Federal Bureau of Investigations. Uh, we also have a task force officer connected and embedded into the D E A Drug Enforcement Administration, and as well as another one in A T F, Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms. We also have a crime analyst embedded into the MIAC, the Michigan Intelligence, uh, Operations Center. Uh, so those embedded positions are Lansing police officers and Lansing crime analysts. And, uh, we are a- able to use a lot of those federal resources, uh, whether it's, uh, looking at casings and ballistics. Uh, whether it's, uh, cellular technology and cellular forensics, uh, we're able to use those resources in the most, uh, robust way of any police department in this area. And oftentimes we don't get credit for half the stuff we do with the Lansing Police Department, but we have already expanded our resources. We know that it's going to take some time, and I've had this discussion with the mayor, uh, about looking at violent crime in a holistic fashion, and the mayor is certainly on board with that. Uh, being able to address not just the crime prevention and the crime, but able to address a host of other issues in the community such as, you know, uh, activities for teenagers, uh, such as our court systems, uh, you know, being apt and, uh, in a way that they can put some informal pressures, informal pressures on, uh, some of the community members as well. So we're just not looking at crime reduction and crime prevention in a silo. We know as a police department, we have to work with anyone that will partner us with us in, you know, the partnership with, uh, Reverend Jones and the clergy. Uh, we, you know, warmly, uh, welcome that partnership. We know the influence they have in the community. And we also know that we need our city council supporting us. Uh, you all are the eyes and ears. And so when you guys feed information back to us about what you're hearing from your constituents, uh, we take it very seriously. And we do the best we can with the resources we have. I'm always going to come back to you and ask for more resources. I've been pretty stern to say, uh, the City of Lansing has become a one-dimensional, uh, police department. Meaning that the only thing we can really address is the cost of service because our staffing levels are so low that the only thing we're doing is just going to call, to call, to call. And so the impact we're having is being proactive is very low. It's mitigated because our staffing levels are so low. And so I'll, I'll always say the Lansing Police Department, until something changes, we should be at two point two officers per one thousand residents. We should have somewhere around two hundred and sixty officers. And the only reason we've had some success is because, uh, we could say that we've added probably another fifteen to twenty officers that are from other departments. But if we ever have those other departments say, we're not going to partner with you, like the M S P and Security Cities Partnership or Project Safe Neighborhood. But if we ever have those other departments say, we're not going to partner with you like the M S P and Security Cities Partnership or Project Safe Neighborhoods. If we ever have the feds and the state police and our locals as far as violent crime initiatives, say, we're pulling out, we're done. We'd lose, you know, twenty, probably twenty uh, officers right off the bat from that. Just pulling those together, those collaborations. So uh, we're, we're willing to work with advanced peace. Uh, we're looking forward to it. Uh, I've talked to Mr. Bogan before, never been a question in my mind. And people have said uh, to me personally that they will work in a silo. It doesn't work. Mr. Bogan has told me that himself. He's the director of Advanced Peace, that the Lansing Police Department has to be involved in it. And so as you move forward, you know, I ask that you uh, you know, take my word for it, that we're looking at things holistically. Uh, i- it's not a silo solution, but it is a solution uh, right now. And we invite anybody to partner with us. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Um, I was, I was one of them who was calling for every government agency, the ice cream truck. A fight, you know, everybody to come in and help. And so I, I'll admit that. And but what you just said is good and I'm, I'm glad to hear it. So thank you. Thank you for saying it.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, councilmember Spitzley. Up next, councilmember Dunbar, followed by councilmember Garza.
Alright. So.
We lost your video, sorry.
Oh. I didn't mean to bump that. I don't even know where to begin. Um, okay, in the vacancy factor that we got today. In Cow, it shows that there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven patrol officers funded and vacant. Two investigators funded and vacant. How many of those are in the process of being hired right now?
Mayor Chief, who wants to take that one?
Take that one, uh, every single one of them. Uh, so right now, we have uh, a total of five certified. The officers that are officers at other departments. And I've pushed and pushed H R and they do a great job for us uh, to give these officers a conditional job. Uh, offers, offers, because a simple fact, we're in competition with every police department across the nation. Uh, everyone, every single one of my officers, the Lansing Police Department's officers can go somewhere within the next two months. I guarantee it. It is that many police departments that are hiring right now. Uh, there's a serious problem in police. So we have five certified that are ready to go to the background phase. And we gotta move quickly because they're getting offers from all over the place and they're high quality. Uh, extremely professional officers. And there's no doubt about it. They've applied to more than just Lansing Police Department. Some of them only Lansing Police Department for whatever reasons they want to come here, family reasons. Uh, relocations, one guy out of Chicago and, and Las Vegas are, are from here. Uh, the other thing we have is this, we have, and this is where we get the majority of our diversity. And that's the uh, people we sent to the academy, that we sponsor to the academy. So we have a hiring process right now, uh, where we said nine, uh, we would want to send nine to the police academy. We also have three that are graduating from the, the police academy right now as well. So we have viable options if we can move fast enough. Uh, to get those people to say, hey, I'm coming to the Lansing Police Department. And it's still no guarantee that they may not go anywhere else. I mean, it's just, uh, you know. I, and I'll tell you this, I mean, the fact that uh, you know, a few months ago that, that the Lansing Police Department, that is. You know, the biggest department in this area, we were losing candidates to Meridian Township. And no slight against Meridian Township, but. It was just the narrative in Lansing was troubling and how can you have someone come to a police department? And start a new job and invest the time and an energy to start that new job. And you may not have a job in any moments, no, it's because of the defund narrative. And so we lost a lot of officers and our reputation as far as stability in the area. Uh, was challenged and it's still being challenged. And so our recruiters have to fight that narrative and say, hey. We have a supportive city council, the cities behind us, we're economically strong. Uh, the mayor's moving forward in a host of different agendas. We have to sell them. To come to the Lansing Police Department. It's not ea- not that easy anymore, council.
I understand why. So, so of the seven patrol officers and two investigators that are, that have been for the last year funded. And vacant, you are anticipating that five will be filled in the next month?
That is totally up to uh, human resources. Uh, they, they have their five candidates in the, going to the background phase. And again, they. I'm sure they got other offers. We have to move fast to get those five.
That's great. And so, so moving fast, so these are, these are, these are officers that are, these are vacant positions that make up. Part of the total of our two hundred and six?
That's correct.
Staff, okay. And of the two hundred and six, am I correct in saying that a hundred and thirty-eight are patrol?
Uh, maybe a little, a little less than a hundred and thirty-eight. Maybe right around uh, hundred and thirty-eight, but actually working the streets. Uh, we're in the tune of about ninety-eight that actually work the streets. Uh, some are, you know, assigned to task force, uh, you know, V C I.
So. Let me, that's wonderful. Okay, so ninety-eight officers are working on average. All right. How many, um, cause we've been, we keep hearing that we have a, a, a low patrol number that are. Bare minimum staff. So how many shifts do we have a day on patrol? Is it three, ten hours that overlap?
You know, uh, councilmember, I'm sorry, you don't know this, didn't previously know this uh, throughout your years of service. But we do have three shifts. Uh, our day shift uh, has uh, normally ten officers. Uh, that work the road, uh, and that shift goes until uh, three P M, excuse me, uh, four P M. And then we also have the afternoon shift that comes on at three P M. And they're, they all work ten hour shifts. And usually that shift is the busiest uh, call wise, as far as calls for service. And they have anywhere from eleven, on a lucky day, they have twelve. And then the night shift uh, that comes on at eight thirty P M, there's a little bit of overlap between afternoon shift and night shift until two A M. And the night shift normally has uh, the minimum one, that is nine officers.
Okay.
And uh, then you fact.
I appreciate that answer. Um, and I did know that answer before I asked. That is why I asked. So we have three shifts a day and we have seven days a week. So there's two hundred and ten shifts in a week. Um, how many shifts a week does, does an officer average working? Four?
Well, it depends. Uh, you have to factor in training. There's a basic training and uh, there's some enhanced training. Uh, and so you have to factor those training days in and. Uh, frankly, I couldn't give you an estimate off the top of my head. And, and then there's additional training if they're on the tactical team, they're on the dive team. So it depends on what officer you.
Councilmember Dunbar, we have quite a few questions left to go.
There's a reason that I'm asking these. There's a reason I don't, I don't.
The end of that then, please, since it appears you do know the answers to these questions.
Okay, so ninety-eight people, let's assume a third of them at any given time are on light duty, other duty, whatever. Um, you've got about sixty-five, sixty-nine officers that are working on an average week, four shifts a week. That's two hundred and seventy-six shifts. In a week. And bare minimum staffing for everyone is two hundred and ten a week. So it seems that the numbers aren't making sense to me. I have not understood yet. Why it appears we have officers that are working or available to work these shifts, but we're still on minimum staffing. Now that.
Well, you, you never let me finish my, my, finish answering the question, council. Remember, I said specifically, many of those officers are on special teams that require special training. And I'd be happy to show you uh, some of our, our leave day. And then, you know, people have vacation time, they have F M L A. Uh, it's a host of different other issues. Uh, you know, i- if you ask someone that is into police scheduling. Uh, for every one officer you want to, on the street, it usually takes about three point five officers. To get that one officer on the street. And again, when you're a small, medium sized police department and you have the level of special assignments we have. Uh, then that does uh, factor into the number of shifts uh, that a person can work. We don't, we don't pay them overtime for training. We try to take them off the street. Uh, so we're not paying them for overtime when someone is required training. And that reduces the numbers. And then when they call out sick or they have a baby, uh, you know, just a host of issues. Or they break a leg. It, it, there's so many different factors. You just can't look at it, uh, you know, with basic math. You have to, you know, humanely understand that these are human beings, not robots. And, you know, they have issues and they have protections through the federal medical, medical leave act and a host of other issues. And they get vacation time and pastime. Uh, so you have to factor all that stuff in. But I'd love to have discussion with you and uh, certainly my uh, my replacement. Uh, patrol captain, uh, presently patrol captain Salisbury knows this stuff inside and out. He's lived it for the past two years.
Okay, so, so the reason that I'm asking those questions is because. It seems that the number of patrol officers is the issue here. Now, I, I don't believe for a second. I know that the, the press release says it is to combat gun violence. We can tell from the. From the date of the letter that came in, um, which I have in front of me. You know, being June of last year, as was mentioned already. Um, this was not intended for gun violence. It was intended just to add more cops to the roster. But we do have already nine funded, but vacant positions. Hopefully, we're going to fill five of them, as you said. Hopefully, that means that we will promote maybe. Um, some more people to investigate, uh, to assist the others that are there. But my, my question and my, my concern about this grant, this cops grant is. We, this is definitely increasing the police budget over time. It is definitely adding to that. It is, it is, it states that it's for four years. It only pays for a year and three months. The, uh, what I'm reading is it's, it is assuming that it's a hundred thousand dollars a year per officer. We want to add five officers per year. That's five hundred thousand dollars a year. There's three hundred thousand dollars a year for incidentals, uniforms, whatever. And the last year's not paid for at all that we have to add to. So you're, this, this is not just a nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollar match. It's actually a one point eight million dollar match because the entire fourth year is paid for by us. And, and I, and, and, and again, my, just from a fiscal standpoint. What we're going to get are, and we don't know that we're going to get them. That's the other thing. I mean, we've been told for years now that there is, and you had, you said this. There is a lack of um, of qualified um, and interested candidates. So um, you know, I, I don't see why we wouldn't, if we were going to accept this grant. Then uh, be fungible about the vacancies that we have here. And let this grant um, fund new cops and then get the other vacancies that are funded off the books. Um, because we're going to be adding these new cops. We have to pay for them for four years. We're also adding some already in the budget that already exists that we have funded, but they haven't been hired. So whatever's left after that, I would wipe. I, I don't, I mean, I don't know how, how else to put that. I just, you know, you're talking about putting ten cops on if we can find them in the next. I don't know, three months, eight months, end of the year. None of which is going to actually affect gun violence, but it does affect our budget. So. I'm concerned about that. And I'm, I'm probably not going to support this for that reason. So. I will let the next person comment on this. And if I have any more questions, I'll raise my hand again.
Thank you, councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, council president. Thank you for being here tonight, chief. You know, when I'm out in the community and I'm talking to my constituents, you know, they want to see a police presence. Um, they want safe neighborhoods. They want safe streets and safe parks. You know, and I, and I know, uh, you know, what's been going on in, in Lansing right now, the, the high uh, violent crimes that's been happening. It's tragic. Um, but those, those uh, those tend to happen when there are police out in, in, in the community. And uh, um, you know, typically the uh, crimes don't happen like that when, when there's a police officer present. So, you know, I, and, and I appreciate you bringing up the fact that, um, you know, those positions may not be being filled because. Of the rhetoric of the defund of the police. You know, they may be going to a more conservative ward, or I'm sorry, municipality. To where they feel like their uh, job security isn't threatened. But the point is, is um, response time, calls of service. Could you touch um, on how this will affect if we do uh, accept this grant and how uh, that will affect calls of service? And um, will it also help with getting our community policing back?
Yeah, I think this, uh, when you talk about calls for service and response time. And let's say out of five officers, you put uh, one additional officer on each shift. Uh, that will assist uh, in uh, the call for service and, and getting there quicker. Uh, particularly on those uh, priority one calls that are the most dangerous. Uh, I think I, I talk a lot about, and I've heard other police departments talk about one dimensional policing. When the only thing your police department really is doing is uh, you know, answering those calls for service. They're not patrolling. Uh, and it's hard for me sometimes to say the patrol division. Because they're running call to call to call. Uh, we're not running calls. They're, they're taking reports, they're writing reports. And some of them are like reports that I think could have been taken over the telephone. And I think uh, when I look at other police departments that have really uh, transformed over the years. Uh, they have focused specifically on the patrol aspect. And some of the lower tier offenses. And I know this could be perceived as a service interruption to the office, up to the community. But if you could, if we could, you know, eliminate some of the most uh, low tier calls. Uh, that law board is missing and there's no video footage, uh, no suspect. Uh, they don't have the serial number on it, nothing like that. Uh, that stuff can be taken over the telephone. And when I mentioned light duty officers, F M L A officers, uh, you know, those are the officers that. Should be taking that stuff over the telephone. And the other officers, if you can free up some time for them. Uh, and you can increase their response time. And you can also increase their patrol time. And also finally, which I think is probably just as important, their community engagement time. Uh, we talk all, we talk a lot about an officer being able to get out of the car and engage with the community. Uh, we can't do that with staffing levels we have. Uh, we have to have more staffing. And, you know, even the five additional officers, it's a drop in the bucket. But uh, you know, what we could do with them specifically is we could, we could expand our violent crime initiative. Uh, we can, you know, expand our uh, detective bureau as a result of having those five officers. Because every time you promote somebody from patrol, uh, you leave a, a gap. And if you're not filling that gap, then patrol suffers. Or you can't feel the promotion because patrol's at a minimum. That's where we're at right now. Patrol's at a minimum. And we can't uh, make those promotions as a result of not being able to answer the calls. And yes, it's going to take a couple of months, but uh, M S P specifically uh, gave us additional resources. But they, they wanted to know that we were putting uh, putting something up front, that we also. Were looking to expand our resources, that they were expanding their resources to help us. And so uh, we took them up and we said, hey, well, you know, we will definitely try uh, to get this grant approved. And they went ahead and gave us an additional detective and working on a second detective as well. But we have to put something forward to show them that we were serious about expanding, uh, how we looked at violent crime. And uh, if we can get those five officers in place, uh, we can move them uh, to a more specialized concentration. Uh, specifically because violent crime initiative, it's very successful at intervening uh, before you have a shooting. But guess what? I mean, I can't work them seventy hours a week. Uh, even if I wanted to, we can't afford to pay them seventy hours a week. And so uh, we have to figure out and make some hard choices because, you know, finances are important. And the welfare of our officers and investigators are important. And the welfare of our officers and investigators are important too. That's why we're leaning on MSP, our federal partners. In the county sheriff, because we're in the midst of burning out our detective bureau. If we continue at the rate we're going now.
Thank you, Councilman Garza, Council Chief. Okay, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. Uh, just a few questions first, um. About the vacancies. So, you know, I'm not opposed to hiring more police officers. But I am somewhat opposed to. Adding more police officers when we still have positions that need to be filled. And I know there's a plan, but. These positions, we've had vacancies. Whether it's the same one. Or just another one, but we've had over five vacancies for as long as I can remember. And there's nothing that is new to, to think that they're going to be filled. Okay, so there are some hires possibly coming. Should they choose to accept after passing all of the qualifications? But then I think Chief has said a few times over that there are. A wave of retirements coming and, you know, people leave for whatever reason. Leave, firing, retire, injuries, all those things. So just because we're filling a few possibly. There's not, there's no, nothing to say that there's not, uh, new ones coming. Chief, do you know about the upcoming, um, retirements or anything in this next year?
But if I can, before the chief addresses that, um, councilman, just so you know. Just a, a year and a half or so ago, or maybe two years ago, chief will remember, we front loaded. We were actually full. Um, we were overstaffed because we knew retirements were coming. We've done a lot of that. Um, so the vacancies have been there for the last year or so. Because we front loaded and then we had some people retire and then we had, uh, some people leave that we weren't expecting. So we went right back into hiring. So we've actually had these vacancies filled, um, and we are continually in the process of filling vacancies as people retire. Uh, as people resign, as we have to relieve them of duty. But we do actively fill and we front load to make sure that we are ready when there's retirements. Um, Chief Green, I'm not sure. The last time we were completely full except, but I know we front loaded maybe a year or so ago, if that's correct.
Yeah, I mean, that is correct. And, uh, again, uh. We've had, you know, some wild cards, uh. People medically, uh, retire. Um, people just go to other police departments. Uh. This is no different than any other police department across the country is facing. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, instability in the staffing. Uh, the best I can tell you is that. Uh, we will get those positions filled. Uh, that right now, as things are moving, uh, the trajectory is positive. Uh, but I can't guarantee you that. You know, I got two people right now that could leave at any moment if they're medically discharged. I have another. Person talking about going to a sheriff department. It's a host of different. You know, hearsay information that could happen at any time. And so we just have to do our best to stay ahead of it. I don't think the city can, um, you know, support us, uh, front loading, you know, five officers. But, you know, we just do our best to stay ahead of it and. Uh, had a conversation with the director of HR today. To try to expedite our process, our hiring process, and that'll be beneficial for us as well.
Sure, I guess my, my, kind of my point is that there's no reason to expect that. Similar conditions, that things would change where. People don't leave the force, um, for whatever reason. Um, and about HR, I, I've heard from recruits individually that. Our HR or the city of Lansing, as they'll just say, basically takes so long in the hiring process that. They don't have time to wait and they choose another job for whatever reason. So I agree that it's competitive. And I guess that goes to just the uncertainty that will even. Get those recruits that are ready to come. Um. So I'm not convinced that, you know, our vacancies are all going to be gone and that we're going to be pushing the limit for five more. Um, but that's just my opinion through what I've heard and other people have other opinions. Um, my other question is. The, for the officers that's coming. Um, do we do like pull their? Like, for example, the guy from Chicago, do we know what his, or if he's had any complaints and how his records look? And if so, did we account for it? And is it something that's going to be made public? For any officers that worked before in the past in other jurisdictions?
Okay, so we do a background investigation and that's one of the things that. Uh, a candidate will, has to consent. Uh, that we can review his or her personnel record, their internal affairs record. Uh, so all of that is reviewed, uh. The human resources is in charge of the background investigation. Uh, they fill that out to a, a contractor. Uh, that's been doing it, uh, for us for a couple of years. Uh, we review all of that. Uh, I've never seen us publicly. Um, disclose anyone's, uh, record moving forward. Uh, but I can tell you that, uh, after that background is completed. Uh, human resources, they make an assessment, whether that's a worthy candidate. Uh, and then myself and the four captains, we all review those backgrounds as well. And if we have questions and follow up, uh, we go back to the background investigative to get those questions answered and. Uh, certainly, uh, we make some tough decisions, uh, all the time, reference, uh, accepting an employee or not.
Sure. And I'm sorry to go back. Did you say that the prospective officer candidate has to consent to? The human resources to look at their background from another place?
That's correct. They do sign the, uh, disclosure form, uh, that they will release all their information. That's part of the process. That they will release, uh, all, all of their employment history, uh, discipline and so forth moving forward.
Okay. And I guess my, another question, you know, since. So I think it's slightly false narrative to say like. You know, we need more officers, we need these five officers. When, again, we don't have everybody hired that we've funded and what? If any difference with a full team look like of what we've already funded? So I, I feel like counsel has done his job to an extent of. Of funding officers because we have, you know, a shortage of what, but we have more funded. And that, that's something I'm getting a hard time getting over. Uh, my next question would be probably to the, to the administration of where. Does the administration have any idea on where they would cut first the almost one million dollars during this? Um. Match time and then the amount to keep those positions in perpetuity? Is there any thought of what departments will be cut?
We'll put together a budget to present to you in, um, in March and you will have that in March. For this year, we don't have to make a change because the, the dollars are funded. Um, and for next year, we will put together a budget and bring it to you in March, just like we do every year.
Okay. And there's another thing that chief said, so. One is he said that, you know, we're kind of the eyes and ears of some of the residents and. I mean, no doubt about it that this. The issue of even hiring offers, officers is more, I guess, polarizing than any of us would probably like. Um, for different reasons, but. Believe it or not, that is. I'm hearing both sides for sure, but I'm definitely still hearing that people. Don't want to see Lansing use its money to have more officers without, you know, like chief said. You know, trying to approach crime holistically, trying to find activities for young people. So. I'm just a little bit hesitant to approve that, given the vacancies and given what I am hearing. And, you know, I think my vote will at least represent some of the people in Lansing and I know. No matter what anybody chooses, theirs will as well. And I hope everybody can respect that. Thank you.
Councilmember Wood.
Call the question.
Motion to call the question. Um, it is not debatable. Uh, with the clerk, please call a roll on calling the question on this item.
On the motion, uh, for the previous question, Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Uh, no, just because I see some answers to that.
Councilmember Statafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
No.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Uh, five yeas, two nays. I believe that is a six vote item. But we have not had a vote on it in a long time.
Uh, Mr., uh.
He could have confirmed.
Joe, are you on? Is it a five voter or a six vote item?
Excuse me, thank you. Uh. Grant acceptance has always been a five vote item.
Sorry, Joe, this is the, oh, the question.
Oh, to call the question, I believe that that is a six vote item.
Okay, motion fails. Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you to Councilmember Jackson for bringing up that point, um. About where money, um, might be better spent to prevent gun violence. Um. We have done, I mean, the, the community is doing a, a host of work. There is a ridiculous amount of evidence and studies that show. That the way to prevent violent crime and gun violence is to promote. Um, equity and reduce poverty. And if we're looking.
Member Dunbar, I'm going to show you the same courtesy I showed Councilmember Spitzley. This is not germane to the accepting of this grant to hire these officers. If you would like to make comments about gun violence and other ways to mitigate it during your council member comments at the end of the meeting, I would welcome you to do so. But please, if you don't have a question on this grant, we are going to move on.
Okay, well, the one point eight million dollars that we would be using for match for this grant could be put into programs. To do just that.
And the number that you're stating is inaccurate. So with that, I would ask the clerk, please call.
It's not, Peter. We're looking at.
Mister clerk, please. Miss, uh, Councilmember Wood.
Um, President Statafor, I think you have the floor and if we could please conduct ourselves in a way that, um. Jermaine to our rules. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunbar, do you have any other questions on the grant? You're on, please mute on. Councilmember Dunbar, you were muted when you responded, I'm sorry.
This grant costs us one point eight million dollars. It obligates us to four years. We have to pay the cost for the fourth year. It is disingenuous to say it only costs us nine hundred and fifteen. We have to pay the five hundred thousand dollars for the five officers, the fourth year and the three hundred thousand dollars for their supplies needed to do their job. It's one point eight million.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
On the resolution, Councilmember Jackson.
No.
Sorry.
No.
Is it? Was that a no? No, thank you. Okay, sorry. Um, Councilmember Statafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
No.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Five yeas, two nays, the resolution is adopted and that takes us to, uh, the budget amendment, the year end budget resolution.
Uh, Councilmember Hussein, if you please like to take, take this moment.
Sure, um, this deals with the closing the books. As usual, we, uh, do have some adjustments. Uh, we had our budget director, Jake Brower, into committee of the whole. He did explain said, uh, adjustments. Discuss the need to allocate the budget of vacancy factor. He also discussed additional costs. That have been incurred in responding to the public health, um, that I should just say the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, discuss the fact that the city, uh, has in fact received and accepted one million, four hundred, five thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars of coronavirus relief local government grants. And another five million, nine hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and eight dollars in public safety and public health payroll reimbursement program grants. He also discussed. Um, our amended stadium agreement, uh, to address some of the financial losses tied to the COVID-19 pandemic. As well as some adjustments that were necessary, uh, in the parking fund, among a few others. Um, this did pass in committee of the whole unanimously. And with that said, I'd move the resolution.
And it's a proper motion. Is there any discussion on the budget amendment, closing the books for 2021, 2021, excuse me? Um, seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
On the year end budget resolution, Councilmember Statafor.
Yes.
Member Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember. Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, the resolution is adopted. That takes us to the public act four twenty-five agreement with the Wip Township.
Sure. And before we get to these, I do want to say that in Cow, I inaccurately linked them as, as entirely related. So we're going to have a little bit more detailed discussion on this, just to make sure everyone is clear. What's before us. Uh, Mr. Vice President, thank you for bringing that to my attention. Joe, thanks for being ready to address my error. Uh, Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, not a problem. We have discussed this first piece quite a bit. Uh, as a matter of fact, I think we had a public hearing back on May 10th. Uh, regarding this, it deals with a potential development, uh, the, the property in question for this development, this potential development is in, uh, Dewitt Township. It's adjacent to the city, um, and I had my notes earlier that it was thirty-four acres, but I think we heard earlier, um, that it was in fact thirty-three acres. The land is owned by, um, Emergent Bio Solutions. Uh, this is essentially a, um, manufacturer that produces drugs and vaccines. Uh, it's essentially a transfer of property, um, of the aforementioned land of the city of Lansing, so that certain benefits can be realized. Uh, that makes the property more attractive for, uh, the development, potential development. It was told us that Emergent is considering, um, prior to the public hearing, uh, that they're considering. A new production and processing plant, uh, the subject property. And that if realized, it could create, could create a substantial amount of jobs for the region. So, um, we, along with the Dewitt Township, have been asked to consider this four twenty-five agreement. Uh, that would result in some revenue sharing, uh, as well as the provision of services. Uh, the terms would be very similar to the four twenty-five that we entered into, uh, with the township ten years ago. Uh, and which is the subject, uh, of our next action item. The agreement, um, would cover only property for the, the development. The individual income taxes and city property taxes would be split fifty fifty. Uh, the city would provide, as my understanding, uh, fire, police, zoning, water, electric and sanitary sewer. Uh, Dewitt would provide code inspection services and there would be a split of ambulance and utility, uh, collections. Uh, board, water and light will supply the, um, electricity. Uh, as discussed tonight during committee of the whole, uh, if any economic incentives, such as, we have got some questions on this. Uh, any economic incentive such as a brownfield TIF, as requested, this would, I have to be considered as part of a separate process from the four twenty-five agreement. Uh, the Dewitt Board of Trustees is going through their process to approve this agreement. They had a public hearing on May 24th. Uh, their thirty day window will close on the 24th, which means this, uh, agreement could be executed as early as the 24th. Uh, if the investment does not happen, uh, this four twenty-five can be revoked through the termination, uh, provisions. Um, again, we had a public hearing on the 10th. We didn't receive any, uh, public, negative public input, as I recall. I don't believe we received, um, much in the way of email correspondence or phone correspondence. With that being said, uh, I would move the, uh, resolution.
That is a proper motion. If there are no further questions, I would ask the clerk to please.
Okay, on the four twenty-five agreement, Councilmember Spitzler.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Statafor.
Yes.
Eight or seven yeas, zero nays, the resolution is adopted. That takes us to the first amendment to the prior, uh. Pre-existing four twenty-five agreement.
All right, Mr. Vice President, um, here's where we need to clean up my mess from Cow, so.
Not a problem. So this really deals with, um, uh, basically extending, uh, the terms of that, that agreement that we entered into in two thousand and eleven. Um, we, we accidentally linked these two, uh, in committee of the whole. We moved this in committee of the whole. Uh, so we are asking Joe, uh, to come out. I really, I think the question that we need, uh, to have answered, Joe, before we actually consider this, um, is why is this necessary? Thank you.
But what is this and why is this necessary? Sorry.
It, it's a, it's a good question. Uh, it is necessary to amend because of the, the, uh, township. And actually Jim was much more involved in this. He handled this personally. So I don't know the details as well as I should, but I can follow up and get you any of those answers. But this is, uh, these amendments. But this is, these amendments to the Duitt Township 425 agreement that was done earlier are just updating the contract relative to services and moving on and extending the period of time. That's primarily the reason for it. And it is completely separate from the other 425 agreement that deals with the 33 acres.
So the extension is 50 years, correct?
I believe that is correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. If I remember correctly, when Jim explained this was so similar to what we did with Jackson National Life when they created another 425 agreement across the road. What we did was we wanted to make sure that they both timed out at the same time. So if this goes through, the one that we just voted on, we want to make sure that they time out at the same time.
That's, I think, why I linked them in my head, so.
I think you're right.
Thank you. So I just want the record to reflect, Mr. Clerk, I was right.
So.
I'll put that down.
Mr. Vice President, floor is yours.
Yep, I'm up. And actually, you should point that at me. I think I was the one that created a bit of a stink about that. And yeah, so in fact, they are linked. That being said, I would move the resolution. Thank you.
All right, there is proper motion before us. Are there any questions? Seeing none on the thing I was right about, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Statafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes, but it seems unfair that he has to vote yes on something that he's crowing about being right about. There's something wrong with it.
Listen, I'll drop it after this. I'm done. I'll drop it.
Seven council members have voted that President Statafor is right. Seven yeas on the resolution, zero nays. The resolution is adopted and we are to speaker registration for public comments on any city government related issue. If you wish to address the city council, now is the time to begin raising your hands on your computer by using the raise hand feature on most devices. On a phone, you can dial star nine. If you can't find raise hand on a computer or other device, use Alt-Y on a Windows computer or Option-Y on an Apple computer. We'll give you up until three minutes into public comments unless there is no public comment, and then we will not sit here for three minutes waiting. But you also have the time during which we are doing reports of officers, boards, and commissions, which is where we are.
Mr. Vice President.
Sure, I would move that all items be considered as read and full and that the proper referrals be made by you, President Stata.
That is a proper motion. Seeing no discussion, would the clerk please call the roll?
On the referrals, Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Statafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays. The referrals are ordered. We have items from the clerk minutes of boards and commissions.
Place those on file.
Liquor license approval for Lansing Shuffleboard LLC.
City of Operations.
Items from the mayor, the reappointments of 19 individuals to various boards and commissions.
Committee of the Whole.
Grant acceptance for the cops grant that was taken care of earlier.
Place on file.
Grant acceptance for Priority Health and National Fitness Campaign Grant for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Ways and Means.
And authorization for the use of ACH or electronic transactions.
Ways and Means.
And we are to motion of excused absence.
A motion to excuse Councilmember Bets. Councilmember Jackson makes the motion. No discussion on that question. Would you please call the roll? Granted, please, Councilmember Bets did ask for an excuse absence this afternoon, this morning.
Okay, on the motion to excuse Councilmember Bets, Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Member Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Statafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays. That motion is adopted. We are to remarks by council members.
Okay, we are at the point of the meeting. Councilmembers have the chance to make remarks to the, to the body. Anyone wishing to make remarks? Seeing none, move on. Marks to the mayor. Mayor.
Sorry, you got me right when my daughter was going to sleep.
Good night.
Everyone says, good night, Hannah.
Would we all be going to sleep right now?
You know, I, I did have a few remarks that I wanted to, I guess, maybe clarify. I am fully supportive, as is Chief Green, of a holistic solution for our gun violence situation. I am certainly proud that we have been able to to tag on a lot of issues in terms of prevention. I was proud to work with you all on advanced peace, and I'm looking forward to that solution coming. Delisa Fontaine is going to be our lead on that effort. So I'm really looking forward to that, and I'm proud of that. And I applaud along with Councilwoman Spitzley. I'm excited for the, the community service, the community services unit to get back up and running. For those who haven't been there, they've been in three different neighborhoods already, and they're, they're talking to kids and really doing a lot of work with our community. And I'm proud of our, of our police community services unit. We are able to reactivate our, our parks programs coming out of COVID, which I think will certainly help to get our kids things to do. And our community centers are going to be reopened. And our Lansing Living Guide is going out with, I don't know, many, many, many pages of activities that, that we've always had and weren't able to have last year. So I'm proud of all of that. That's, the prevention piece is certainly going to be very important as we provide things for people to do again, not just our kids, but, but everybody in our community. That being said, it's a prevention and enforcement piece. I thank you, or at least the five of you who were supportive of, of some additional resources for our police department, and I can't say it any better than our chief did. I'm proud of his, his work with the FBI, with the ATF, the DEA, all the task forces. Everything the VCI is doing, we've taken over 200 guns off the street this year alone. I'm excited about our MSP partnership for, for detectives and other things. These are all things that I think are, are important in working together. I want to address the task force issue, which they came up with Councilwoman Spitzey raised, and I'm happy to address. These are people in, in the cabinet that have, that are all working on this issue separately that I wanted to put them together. But the task force is not just the cabinet members. The task force is working with a variety of other partners. We are working with Ingham County Prosecutor's Office. We're working with judges. We have had reach out, and we're going to be working with several community organizations. Congresswoman Slotkin's office has to be part of it. There are many who have reached out and want to be part of this effort, and we are expecting all of them to be part of it. The, the original putting together the task force was to say, we're working on all these pieces independently. Our neighborhood is working on them, our, our police, our parks. We need to bring all of that together for a holistic approach. So that's the intention of the task force, is to bring everyone together to, to hear from council, to talk to, to really to get all of the opinions in to make sure that, that all of us are working together because we need to attack this problem together in a holistic approach. So I look forward to working with you all. I look forward to, to, you know, making sure that we are all together addressing gun violence, addressing violence, addressing the issues that, that need to be addressed. And I look forward to, to that conversation. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we are to public comment by, I'm sorry, public comment on city government related matters, but we have no hands free.
Everyone on the list appears to have spoken at the meeting or I know is probably not making comments, so with the council's permission, I would like to call the last virtual meeting of the Lansing City Council adjourned at 10:00 PM.
Thank you.